Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. It's good to see you here this morning. We're gonna go and get started. Commissioner Ward, can you lead us in prayer and pledge today?
Yes. Lord, we come to you today as we conduct our county business. We pray for everyone in the room, Lord. I mean, we pray for everyone that was affected by the tragedy at FSU last week, Lord. We pray for everybody that just needs your healing touch and pray for everybody that just needs your prayers, Lord. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can I, can I say something before we start this meeting?
Uh, you can.
Just, just, just the, just the thing.
Okay.
Commissioner Ward, I'm so glad that you're doing so much better and can move around and you were missed at the last meeting.
Reflected, uh, God, I really can't see today. Um, the, to, uh, to your authorization for resolution of support going with the Florida Commerce Packet to, to re-designate rural area of opportunity, especially for Franklin, Franklin County and all the other counties in that designation. Uh, we've done it before. I mean, it's just, so it's your, your, your call, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, whether you want to call for, it was yesterday, what, when did we talk? Four, five o'clock?
Yeah, it's pretty late.
Yeah. You call for public comment or not, it was there by then, so.
Okay. When we get to a real call for public comment, which is what's in there, but it is a letter of support. It is something we're already involved in. Uh, it's a five-year deal, is it not?
Yep, every five years.
And, and it's also time-sensitive. It's gotta be done before the next board meeting.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so with that.
Otherwise to that, I'm sorry, nothing else, sir.
All right. Well, seeing none others then, with that, we, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as it's been amended.
So, second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Cream, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, we're gonna pay the county bills and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you.
All right, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right, Mr. Marone, I only seen one public comment, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
All right, Mr. Weber Blue, public comments?
Good morning.
Morn, please come forward to the podium, sir. State your name, you have five minutes.
Uh, Weber Blue, uh, I had a little issue going on at my home in East Point, 644 Ridge Road. But Commissioner Ward came over with the road department, and I think we've came to a solution. If we have any other issues with it, then I'll come back again, so I think I'm gonna just release it into her hands in the road department and let's see if it, you know, resolves itself.
Okay.
But thank y'all for hearing me.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Blue.
All right.
All right, Mr. Fonda Davis, who's the next contestant?
Good morning, Commissioners. I have one action item on my report this morning, and I'm gonna jump right to it. Uh, Franklin County Seahawk Track Team advances to state. The track team is asking for a donation from the county. Uh, this action, action, action item.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. I'm, I'm gonna move to approve, but I have a question.
All right, what's your question?
Um, how much does our normal standard, what is it, the amount of money that we send or that's in the budget?
How much do we normally?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it just depends on what level. Uh, I know we have, did as much as five thousand.
Yeah, when they run the national stuff, we've done five thousand.
I just didn't know. There was no amount on here. I was just curious, but that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we did have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any additional discussion?
I have a question to ask Fonda. Fonda, have we ever had a state track team, I mean, track team go to state?
Not, I recall, Commissioner.
I can't remember.
Yeah.
Cause we didn't have track in school when I, and of course, that was spitched by, well, should have. That's a long time ago.
Yeah, we've had a couple of individual runners make it to state in the last five or six years, but not like we're doing this time.
The team.
Right.
Yeah, they, they did, they have been doing really well.
It's middle school.
Yes.
Yes.
It's fantastic.
It's good.
Yeah, the, the way it is in our policy, Mr. Davis, is twenty-five hundred for state and five thousand for national, correct?
Mm-hmm. Right, yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Director Davis, do you have that in your budget to, to give fifteen, an amount?
Uh, as of right now, uh, I can say yes. Again, the twenty-five hundred and five thousand normally, what we do towards the baseball. Again, uh, we helped out basketball team because county do not offer basketball, but we have helped basketball teams in the past and also now track, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as of right now, yes, sir.
I actually seen news clip last night of the team and what he was getting on, on the TV.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. You got a fast team this year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. Marone, one thing on this. Anyway, you can make contact, I guess, with the A.D. and just have them come next meeting for us?
Yeah, thank the director?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Yep. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
We have a motion, the second already.
I know that, but is it for, we didn't say the amount.
Whatever, you said twenty-five hundred for state?
Oh.
Up to.
Up to?
Right.
Yeah, sometimes they don't need the whole, the whole thing, so we.
And you have that in your budget?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to give the track team of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
I'll remember.
Up to, correct?
Up to.
Up to, yeah.
All right.
Uh, just a question, Fonda. That check does not need to be cut before the next commission meeting, does it? Because that was not included as part of the, the check run today.
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay.
Any additional discussion before we vote? The motion's been amended and seconded as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Yep. That's all I have.
Tell the superintendent we said, "You're welcome."
Say it again?
Tell the superintendent we said, "You're welcome."
Okay.
Okay. I, I just, I do have a question, actually. Where, where's it gonna be at, the state?
That's, I asked the Senate text. I do not have that answer right now, but I'm trying to find out. The A.D. hadn't sent it to me yet.
Well, we can ask.
I was told up there. It was somewhere at six forty.
I, I sent it to you when I found it out. Yes, sir.
Could you explain to, I know it's from the last meeting, but a couple of Commissioners had questions about that ring power information that was in their packet. Actually, they just got it today, even though it was, I believe it was in there. You said they should have gotten it at the last meeting, but it didn't, so.
So this is the, the compactor that, uh, we have right now at the Landfair, eight twenty-six K, and it's starting to give us some problems. Uh, just hate to buy a new one because of transfer station that we plan to go to. Uh, but again, it's, it's starting to give them problems, so I had Ring Power to come down and give us an estimate what it would cost to rebuild. Hopefully, it would, once the rebuild lasts us until we move to the new style tran, uh, transfer station. And if you see it, what it costs to rebuild versus what a new one would cost is, uh, looking at approximately five hundred fifty-nine thousand or five hundred sixty thousand to rebuild versus, uh, one point two million to buy a new one. Uh, just something I, I talked with Ms. Erin about it, and she recommend that we put it towards the new budget.
Okay.
So basically, there's some FYI for you.
This is, so this is for a budget discussion coming up?
Sir.
Budget discussion for the budget coming up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Cat's gonna, I mean, Ring Power is gonna rebuild this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanna make sure our, our mechanics did not have to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's much, yeah, Commissioner.
Yeah, because it's, uh, that's a big job, so anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But, Mr. Fonda, this, uh, the other thing in your report about the, uh, transmission issues, which trucks are these on? Is this the newer trucks or is this up trucks you've had for a while?
Uh, from twenty, uh, I think it's, the twenty. I have two twenty-twenty. One is in Panama getting a transmission for eight thousand dollars, and one had a misfire, and they could not diagnose the transmission till we got the misfire, and Jonathan and Rusty worked on that, and they couldn't get the misfire out. So it's in Tallahassee now. Went there yesterday, so, yes. And from what we hear in front of transmission shop is that these ten-speed transmissions that they're going to is nothing but trouble. One truck has eighty-seven thousand miles on it, and the other one have a hundred and seven thousand miles, so, you know, it's really no miles. But the one in Tallahassee that even went yesterday, Albert took it, Albert Floyd took it, he said he just didn't make it. So, it may need a motor, engine, or antitransmission, I don't know yet. Waiting for that call this morning. But yes, these trucks, and, and we pull trailers, but it's, we bought a two-fifty to pull the bigger trailer. But these is regular, um, six-by-ten trailers or something, so I don't know if that's the problem.
No, they should have pulling weight to pull those trailers, the, the capacity.
Mr. Chairman, I have, what's the make on these trucks? Are they Ford?
I see.
Cause I know that, that, uh, G.M. has had some transmission issues.
That's correct.
That's right.
It's what all makes a, well, I can't say all. I know Ford and GMC is, Chevrolets is having its trouble.
That's ridiculous.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's gonna be the EcoBoost, and so it's really, I'm assuming that's the EcoBoost.
No, these are five-ohs.
These are five-ohs, are they?
Yeah.
They just don't make them like they used to.
The two thousand is still running, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Fonda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I got.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Uh, just one thing. I met with New Cities Manager, Mr. Michael Brillhart. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, I met with New City Manager, Michael Brillhart of Apalachicola.
Okay.
And he wanted me to express his gratitude for you being able to, um, cut the, the field at last minute notice.
Okay.
To tell you thank you.
All right, thank you. We aim to please.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to say thank you for fixing, excuse me, those handrails at Carabel Beach at Wayside Park so that the public could use a hand, have a handrail going down the steps to enjoy our beach. So I know, uh, one of your employees kinda helped with that, Mr. Seegory, Corey Seegory, so I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I'll, I'll let him know. Thank you.
And thank you for your help with, uh, measuring the height of the rims at Sixth Street Park here in Appalachia.
Yes, sir.
I, I talked with the mayor about it. She assured me that they would get that rectified.
Okay.
One of them was about, it was under ten foot, and the other one was like almost ten and a half feet.
Right.
So, we're just trying to improve it. We want our guys' shots to be good when it comes to basketball season. We wanna be thinking it's different on one end versus the other, and we're gonna all be consistent. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
So, uh, just got the text. I am G Academy in Braden, Florida.
Okay.
For the track.
Okay.
Yes.
I am G. They're poaching all our athletes.
You know they will.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
All right, Ms. Erin Griffiths? Ms. Erin, do any of these need to be talked about individually for you? I, I noticed a couple of them have more than one action item on them, is why I'm asking.
Erin, you need to unmute.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to do that, but I, I think I was locked on your side. Um, yes, um, the only change on here is the, um, action item number two, the Airport Runway Planning Grand Amendment Modification and Task Order. Um, we did not have that grand amendment come in, um, actually in time, so I was hoping to receive it by today, but it has not materialized yet, so Department of Commerce is working on that. I hope to have that for you all at the next meeting.
Okay, so we have one and then three through eight potentially as consent items, correct?
Correct.
All right, Commissioners, are there any things you want, would wish to pull to discuss, cause you have any questions about, uh, before we do these items on consent? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for consent on item one and then three through eight on Ms. Griffiths' report.
Same move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cream. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Ms. Erin, any other updates for us or for the public?
Uh, well, actually, the final phase of the Fort Coombs Armory Convention Center is actually currently being advertised for construction bids. Um, CR sixty-seven, Phase Four, is also out for construction bids and C.E.I. services. And the Restore SGI Stormwater Preconstruction Meeting will be held on April thirtieth, um, here at the, uh, East Point Administration Building.
And when, when should they be getting the notice to proceed with that project?
Uh, the notice to proceed is going to be May first.
Okay. All right. All right, sounds good. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Erin?
I got one. Uh, Ms. Erin, in reference to the final phase on the armory, um, what is the final phase? What are you actually doing?
Oh, let, uh, let's look at that real quick.
It's a whole list of stuff.
Okay, um, as far as the, um, the final phase for the armory is going to be, let's see, includes the renovation of the existing multipurpose room to install a new ADA-compliant toilet room, um, small multipurpose room and associated mechanical, electrical plumbing and fire sprinkler systems. The project includes renovations of the existing corridor, hallway, and ramp, installing a new ADA-compliant ramp, trim work and doorway to the multipurpose room. Um, also renovations of the existing exterior windows, interior running wood trim, and wood doors in the main hall. Um, the project includes demolition repairs and installation of a new shingle and membrane roof systems. Um, will also be refinishing the existing wood floors in the main hall, corridors and offices, new glass globes to be installed on the existing lighting fixtures, and new electrical outlets in the main hall. Also includes renovations of the main entrance doors. Um, and, um, also includes the painting of the interior, other interior improvements, and other work indicated in the contract documents. Um, it will also include the cleaning and painting of the exterior brick facade as well, so, um, this should be the last phase of this project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one of the key ones I was looking at was the main entrance doors. Couple events I've been to was, uh, having a problem with the doors, so I wanted to make sure that was included. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Griffin? Ms. Erin, thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Have a good one.
You too. Mr. Marong?
Hey, Commissioners, okay, as we moved, uh, along here this morning, I hope I just didn't jinx it, uh, page ten. Uh, I got three action items. One was a late addition. Uh, I don't know how you want to handle them. If I ask questions, if I need the three, it's only three. I could do it one by one, whatever works.
Go ahead and do them one by one because there, I think there's gonna be questions on, on both of the two.
Okay.
And then the other one's a late add.
All right, Commissioner, at your, at your March twelfth meeting, the board authorized an advertisement for full-time in-house planner. After Mr. Curreton retired, after over thirty years of service, the board engaged A R P C for planner services. That's, that's Justin. Um, that contract will expire on June thirtieth. Staff interviewed, uh, six applicants and is recommending Ms. Brianna E. Robinson for the position. The offer of, the offer of employment letter is, was attached to the packet. She is cur- Bree is currently the C D of Apalachicola's planner. So, uh, board action to accept the staff recommendation and hire Ms. Brianna E. Robinson as the county planner.
Aye.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Crum. Any discussion, Commissioners? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous vote, five oh.
At your last meeting, Mr. Kirshenbaum asked the board to retain an office in the vacant hangar. That was the one recently vacated by Mr., um, what's his name? Sorry.
Randall Terry.
Randall, Mr. Randall, by Mr. Terry. Oh, one of them days. For an onsite airport manager's office and meeting room, it's explained the office has a separate entrance. It will not interfere with any of the other activities in the hangar once it, once the hangar itself is rented. Utilities are scheduled to be switched from the previous hangar tenant. What action to approve? The airport manager's office meeting room as requested. Think it's already been in use, uh, been put to good use from what I've heard. A few meetings have had there, out there.
Certainly.
Second with a comment.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Anderson, go ahead.
I, I actually went out there to a, a quick meeting last Thursday. I was asked if I could run down the road right quick and, and meet with some gentlemen and, and it was done in that office building and it's very, it's, it's a very professional atmosphere. It looks good. It's a good, it's a good reflection of the, the county.
Yeah, it is.
You know, it's a lot better than going up in that, you know, and I'm not knocking the F B O allowing us to use that office space up there, but it's just, you know, it's, it's not enclosed. You got that view. The people, you can just see their, you know, eyes traveling out to the runways. It was, you know, it was, it was a good atmosphere.
I told Steve I'm a little envious of his, of that, that office compared to my little box in the back.
Put a good view in.
Yeah.
Put Michael in the corner.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And Commissioners, the late addition, um, I'm not gonna read it because it's basically Roy's email, um, basically is redesignation of the rural area of opportunity. Florida Commerce, uh, sends a package to the governor to do that. Uh, they want each county to have a resolution in that package supporting the redesignation. And that's what we're asking for the chairman's, um, to authorize the chairman to sign that resolution.
Before we take any action, I will call for public comment since it was a late add. Is anyone in the room that would wish to comment on this publicly? You do not have to have filled out a speaker card. You just have to want to comment. All right, try Zoom, please.
Anyone attending, uh, via Zoom that would like to comment on this particular item, the redesignation of rural area of opportunity, please indicate by raising your hand on your smart device. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Then what's the pleasure of the board?
Same move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, I, informational, I signed the, um, archive, uh, services for the county's Facebook page. So now we just need to get the county's Facebook page. But I have the archive system set up and ready to go. And your next meeting, class, the next meeting is not in June. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ward, because that's what I had there first. She caught that, yes. Like I'll try to give the board a vacation or something. Um, your next regular meeting will be Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-five, right in here at nine o'clock. And from then, then on, we go with the first and third Wednesdays of every month, which eliminates all the conflicts we had, you know, with F A C meeting. In the summer conference, it eliminates the, the problem we had around Thanksgiving, the one around Christmas and, you know, some others that were coming up. So, yeah.
All right. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Marong?
Short and sweet today.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Attorney Shure.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, submitted my report. Unless the board has any questions for me, I'll wait for directions on how the board wants to handle the consent item.
Okay. Well, you only have one item that's an action item, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
All right. And that's, uh, request to schedule a public hearing?
Yes, sir. That is a request to schedule a public hearing to consider amending the zoning code to authorize the compliance officer to place stop work orders on, as part of their code enforcement duties. If they're out and they see construction activities and it's not a permit been issued, it would then authorize the compliance officer to place a stop work order on the property.
Okay, but that would still, Mr. Patterson, I'm asking questions, but you might need to answer this because you might know better than any of us in the room. That would still fall under our building official though, correct?
This would be in addition to the building. Right now, the building code only allows the building official to place stop work orders, but in working with the compliance officer, uh, it's my understanding that there's a desire that she had the ability to also place stop work orders in a very limited capacity. She's not exercising, she is not exercising any of the duties of a building official.
Right.
It's simply a ministerial duty. If she's out doing code compliance and she sees a construction activity,
Yes.
she looks on the county's computer records, either there's a building permit or there's not.
Right.
If there's not a building permit, then she would place the stop work order, then the stop construction activities until they get the required permit.
Okay, okay.
But right now, the code only allows the building official to issue the stop work order. So I'll discuss this with the compliance officer and she, she's fine with moving forward.
Okay. All right, and again, we'd be having a public hearing about.
Just for a public hearing, yes, sir.
Okay.
Same move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And unless the board had any questions for me concerning my information items, that will conclude my report.
Can I ask my question?
You sure can.
On, uh, number two, about the M S V U's.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, did you hear, ever hear back from Dog Island?
I have not. Uh, I, I do have confirmation, uh, from, uh, the, the City of Carabelle chief that he has directly spoken with the chief from Dog Island, but I have not received word either directly or indirectly from Dog Island. I have heard from, um, Commissioner Crum, the City of Apalachicola had a meeting on Monday of this week and they, they also would like to, uh, request voter consideration of an increase in the M S V U.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm still waiting on that letter.
Okay, I mean, if, if, if Carl Whaley has made contact with him and talked to him personally and then they haven't responded, I mean, it's not, I, I hate to say it, but it's on them.
Yes, ma'am.
So as it stands, six out of seven would be asked for the increase.
That's my understanding of the facts, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, follow-up question. All that information that we've received, is it something that we're gonna publish so people can look and see it? How does that work?
I was going to bring proposed ballot language and ballot rules back to the board at this meeting, but since we were making additional efforts with three other departments, I've deferred that until, uh, one of the two meetings in May.
Right.
Because I'm not sure when I'm going to actually receive, you know, the written documents. Uh, but once I know for a fact all the departments that are requesting and what they're requesting, I will then present to this board, under my report in this public setting, proposed ballot language and ballot rules. Ballot rules is who gets to vote and who doesn't.
Right.
Uh, and then the ballot language, I will tell you that, uh, in looking at some of the requests, I am concerned that we're not going to be able to put on the ballot the entire request because some of them are extremely lengthy because they go through each of the categories. And there's a seventy-five word limit last time I looked. Of course, we haven't done one of these in ten years, so I'll, I'll, I'll say maybe the laws changed, but the last time I did this, there's a seventy-five word limit on the ballot that you can present to the public. So, um, I may be proposing to the board that you, 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 you look at the most numerous properties out there, which I think are going to be vacant and residential, and we'll try and get as many of those increases, uh, as the ballot limitation language will allow us. And it's just the, the number of words. There's a statute. You're limited on the number of words you can use. And if you go above that, then you're in violation and the supervisor elections won't hold the election and the division of elections at the state won't approve it, so.
Was that, was that all for your question? Well, Attorney Shure, has the date already been set for the election or?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor waiting on us to get all the information.
Yes, sir. She's waiting on ballot language, ballot rules, that I will then give to her. She in turn sends that to the state, gets state approval, which is what she's done, uh, for, you know, the, the other M S V U election. So, I mean, it's a standard protocol. Once the state approves it, then she'll schedule the election.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Commissioners, or about any other items on Attorney Shure's report? All right. Uh, do we need to take a break to go to P Z N A or are we ready to roll?
We're ready to roll.
All right, go ahead, Mr. State.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing today?
Well.
I have a couple of items. Well, I've got four total, but the two, um, for y'all's approval are, uh, critical shoreline application for six twelve River Road. Is a consideration of a request to replace an old dock with a new dock and a larger footprint. The new single-family dock will consist of nine hundred and seventy total square foot with seven hundred six-foot being uncovered and two hundred and sixty-four foot, square foot being covered along with one boat lift. The project is located at six twelve River Road, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Gary Silvernell, applicant.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. This is basically just replacement of a dock that's already been dilapidated. They're just trying to replace it.
Yes, ma'am.
There is a hole on.
They're going, and they're gonna go with a bigger dock.
Slightly bigger.
It's in the main part of the river. It's not, um, because I, that was a question I had been on River Road, you know, that catches New River and Carabelle River. And so this is actually a Carabelle River. So it's, he's got plenty of room to do it. It's.
Yeah, I see that. That's one of the things I looked at as well is the, it's a lot bigger around that bend. So all, uh, and staff recommended approval in addition to our P, B O A and P and Z board. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crum. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Go ahead, sir.
We have a preliminary and final sketch plat approval for four ninety-six Avenue A in East Point. A consideration of request for prelim- preliminary and final plat of a subdivision of par- of a parcel into three lots. This property is located at four ninety-six Avenue A, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. Sketch plat was approved by Franklin County Board of County Commissioners on six, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Request submitted by Thurman Roddenberry agent for Kimberly Balzey, applicant.
Okay, this is the one that required them to remove, uh, a structure, didn't it?
Yes.
Because they had four and they were going down to three. Okay. I'm just making sure we're talking about the same piece of property. Or, I was thinking about the same piece. Yeah, it's, it's been needing doing for a long time. And they're just trying to come into compliance.
They're trying to bring it into compliance the best they can because it was, they had R V lots and all kinds of stuff there, um, five years ago.
Trust me, I know. I'm in favor of it, but does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, since we, we already approved it once, is there a reason why we're having to approve it again or?
It's the process. The final plat is the process.
Same move to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, five oh.
Okay, we also have a, my next item is a communications tower for Roast Star L L C. And it's gonna be on F D O T land. It doesn't require a permit from the county. It's out of our jurisdiction for, I don't know the reason and all that, but they sent us a courtesy letter telling us they were doing it and.
Where's it located, Stan?
It's on, well, they gave us that long.
Or what, what road is it?
It looks like it's out there at the old fire tower at Odina.
Okay.
It looks like that's the.
Okay. We need one in between Carabelle and, and St. John.
It's not quite there. It's between the Y and Odina, so.
Yeah, we'll put the coordinates, trying to figure out where it was and that's where it pushed me, the one out.
That's what we said, Odina. That's in goal.
Yeah, but he's talking about between the Y.
Okay.
Between that, we need it right there anyway. Cell service is horrible.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know what it kind of, I don't know if it's a cell tower or if it's a.
It'll have to be one of them.
Air Force serve, whatever.
Yeah, they're in Total.
And Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'm gonna reach out to these individuals to see if they might be interested in going up sixty-five. I mean, it's not gonna hurt us to ask, right?
It's not.
It's not gonna hurt to ask. They can tell me no. So that's what I'm gonna plan on doing. He got, I've got his information. I'm gonna give them a call.
They can also tell you yes?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, and I have one more item. We had, uh, we were contacted
Here we go.
by Mr. Silvernell, who got the dock approved, and by Kerry Weber, who were, they were asking for a, um, they were asking, asking for a zoning change on their property, but they pulled their request, but it was on the agenda. So I'm thinking that's where the information came from.
Come, who's coming from?
Um, but we've got this, this was sent out in an email to, um, it looks like it's county letterhead. It's got a watermark, which I don't think we use a watermark on any of our stuff, but, um, and it's for, this one is for ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars in additional fees, a fee for licenser, licensure and certification approval fee, an application process and review fee, a legal and compliance evaluation, record keeping fee, facility and infrastructure evaluation.
Did it, did it emailed to them or?
Emailed to them.
He just added just another one. That's Silvernell.
Yeah, okay, so he's got the, so.
So somebody sent him some.
So I think they're going off the agenda to find them.
Yes, so they're sending out scam emails, uh, requesting that they send, uh, they wire their money.
Yeah, you have to respond to the email and then they give you wiring instructions.
Yeah.
To send them the money.
What shocked, what shocked me yesterday is that they've gone to the point of, uh, and Attorney Shure, you need to look at, of using the county's look, I mean, they've moved our seal logo, everything, put it, put it as a watermark on one of the documents.
Right, and then.
Very extensive.
The email is signed, um.
Is it build, it's building at Franklin County, Florida dot U S A.
Yeah, that's who they've got it.
That's the catch right there.
And they said it's from, uh.
And they put the wrong address on there. I noticed that on, as well.
Yeah.
Oh.
Technically.
And then they, they've got it, um, best regards, David Duncan, Board Commissioner.
Yeah.
Board Chairman. So, you know, they've gone through, they don't know how our process works, but they know enough to try to fool somebody. So yesterday I went, met with, um, the Sheriff's Department and let, informed them what was going on. And they called F D L E, was I was sitting there and got, and F D L E's involved. So I don't know if they'll get anywhere with it, but at least we. We did it. And the sheriff put out a scam notification because he's got eight million followers on Facebook.
Yeah.
I figured that was the best way to get information out there.
Excuse me.
That was a pretty good chunk of change too. They were asking like, I'm hoping these individuals knew that ten thousand dollars was a really lot of money for, for a zoning change request.
Honestly, if you go to places, it's not that much money. If you were building in, in Hillsborough County or something, that would be, that wouldn't, it just happens that here we're super cheap and.
Sad thing, Mr. Chairman, is I probably never catch the person that's doing it. It's like all these other hackers. That's all they have time to do and they block their I P addresses and it's impossible to find these people to hold them accountable and they just go to their next, their next one. And are these people, um, did anybody, I don't know if you can answer this, anybody get scammed? Did anybody have to, did anybody pay?
I know that Mr. Silvernell got, um, he called it and the Wevers called it. We have one more we need to check with, this other, um, this Avenue A, because they were on the agenda too and. the agenda too, and see if they got anything. We haven't.
That's insane.
Talked to them, but we have to, we need to reach out to them and see if they were in, if they got any emails on it, because all your information, I guess, is there. I guess the email address and everything's on the agenda. I don't, so that's what I don't know, how they.
It's on the permit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's on the permit application.
On the pack, on the application for.
Oh, so they're looking at the P and Z agenda, not the county commission agenda?
Right, the P and Z agenda.
I got what Silverman says.
David's name on there, his chairman.
Yes, chairman. Yeah, so, no commissioners, we did not send SWAT to David to arrest him. Now, that would be, let me clear it up at first, so we didn't. But we will, in fact, well, Angela just texted me while Steve was talking, what the building department is doing and zoning, henceforth, every single applicant, they're informing them that look out for the scam, so they'll all know moving forward. I'll put it on the website, of course, this afternoon, after we had this discussion today, and as soon as you, the Facebook is activated, might not be the first post, but it'll be one of the first three posts that I put out there on it, okay?
Well, Mr. Chairman, thanks to the public for kinda letting us know about it, because otherwise we probably wouldn't have and getting some people scammed, so thank you. It's horrible. I hate hackers.
Anything else for Mr. State?
That is it.
I've got, I've got one question.
Okay, please.
Got mine. What, any updates on the two houses that land on.
They're still, they've been sending us the information that we've asked for, and we're still in the process.
Any communication with the professional business people?
They just called and asked what we were, you know, where we were at and all. They're trying to wrap up their investigation, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, if anything happens in between me, just make sure it's emailed to us, so we'll all know about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Let's take about a five-minute recess and we'll come back to the presentations.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. We're going to reverse the order a little bit for Mr. Walker. He's having some other things that might require him to leave earlier, so we're going to do him next. Mr. Walker, please come on down.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. David Walker, a new granddaddy, you know. First grandson, so it's a good thing. CEO at Williams Memorial Hospital. I here help with me David Bowling and Susie Busker. David Bowling will come and give a run through of the rural health clinics here. Before we get started, just a point of note. Both of our clinics have seen an increase at fiscal year end 2024 of 20%. So 20% increase in visits in both clinics. October 1, 2024 to date, to March, excuse me, to March 30th. The first we see the increase of maybe 9%, 9 and 10% between the clinics in Appalachia Cola and Carabelle. I turn over to David and David can run through the clinic presentation, run through some numbers for you as well. Then we have Susie Busker here as well. She's the clinic office practice manager that runs the clinic's day-to-day operations.
Thanks, David. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As David mentioned, you know, appreciate the, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you guys again. I wanted to really, and we put together a presentation and before I get started and Mr. Ron, do I navigate on this?
Do you want me to run it for you as you speak?
Yeah, that'd be great. Well, I can, I can do it. I mean, if it's, it's just toggling through it.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. But what we wanted to do and, you know, obviously is, you know, come before the Commissioners as well as, I know this is a public meeting as well. And I wanted to give just really an understanding of the rural health clinics, the two clinics here at Williams. Really a little bit of background on the clinics, what is a rural health clinic? And also look at, you know, the two locations here, but I think more importantly, look at the, and address some benefits of having provider-based rural health clinics versus the drawbacks. There are drawbacks and I'll get into some of that as well. And then plus, I think also more, most importantly is the current financial health of those two clinics. And we've been able to provide that snapshot in this as well. And then some recommended next steps that we would like to share with the Commissioners as well. So just diving into and getting started, you know, really what is a rural health clinic? And, you know, on the slide here, we have some, just a brief, you know, there's a lot to this, but this in a nutshell, kind of gives you a high-level look at really what is a rural health clinic. Again, it's obviously located in rural underserved areas with a shortage of primary care providers. And when you think about, you think about the patient care that is being, is able to be delivered outside the setting of a hospital. This is extending that patient care out into the communities. And certainly from a, from a care that's non-emergent, that's able to be provided out in the communities as well as, you know, obviously the preventive healthcare and so forth that goes along with that. RHCs, rural health clinics can be public, not-for-profit and/or for-profit related healthcare facilities. And certainly to be certified as a rural health clinic, you must meet all state and federal requirements, which there are a lot, which does include the location staffing and healthcare services requirements. And when you look at staffing, I think that's important and I know that's, you know, to be a rural health clinic and having the advanced practitioner, advanced practice registered nurse providing care and over 50% of the time, an individual with that credential has to be providing the care at the clinics. And we do have at both of our clinics, you know, advanced practice registered nurses who are providing that care. And we have a collaborating doc, medical doc, and it's Dr. Conrad providing that collaboration and oversight. Just a brief note on the difference though between a provider-based rural health clinic and versus an independent rural health clinic. Now again, provider-based rural health clinics, you know, are owned and operated as part of a hospital that's participating in CMS or the Medicare program. And, you know, certainly when they are owned and operated under a hospital setting, they do operate under the licensure and governance and supervision of that hospital. And I thought it was important to point out and share with the Commissioners that most provider-based RHCs are hospital-owned. And it's across the country. And the last statistic that I was able to pull, and again, this is dated from 2022 information, just for clarity purposes, but about 66% of the provider-based rural health clinics are hospital-owned across the country. So you can see most are owned by hospitals. It can be independent. You can have an independent RHC or rural health clinic. And those freestanding clinics are typically, as you would imagine, are owned by the provider or a provider-type entity. They can be owned and are operated by a larger healthcare system, but do not qualify for that provider-based status. Again, there are proximity-related issues and other criteria. I won't dive into a lot of those details, but as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of regulatory requirements and so forth that a larger healthcare system outside of proximity, a 35-mile radius can't, can't operate as a provider-based clinic in that setting. So just kind of moving through this though and talking about the benefits that provider-based rural health clinics bring a hospital, for example, or bring an organization. And as I think it's obvious that these clinics serve as the key access point for primary care in underserved communities. And, you know, we, we talk a lot and speak a lot, you know, not just here, but other healthcare organizations that we support. That primary care is, you know, the, the building blocks of your, of your, of your healthcare in your community. You know, you want to expand upon your primary care that will help, you know, certainly treat and care for the patients in the community, but it also helps, you know, strengthen the hospital. And, you know, another benefit with a provider-based rural health clinic, they are cost-based reimbursed from Medicare and in most cases Medicaid. Integration, integration with hospital for ancillary services. You know, you're going to receive and you're going to refer for lab tests, imaging and other types of specialty care that are provided in a hospital setting. It certainly enhances the continuity of care. You have shared medical records and so forth when it is hospital-owned and a provider-based relationship. You do have coordinated teams that are able to deliver that patient care. And, you know, you have access to organizational support, you know, in terms of support staff. You've got management, information technology, revenue cycle services, lots of different services. HR services, payroll services, all types of different back office type services that, that your hospital does help support and provide to the clinics. And then financially, one of the strong benefits of having a provider-based RHC is the hospital's participation in 340B program. Without that provider-based RHC, for example, the hospital, the hospital would still qualify for 340B, but the true benefit the hospital receives from having provider-based clinics is the driver behind the success of the 340B. And I'll just give a number here for a minute, just to share with the Commissioners. $264,000 the last 12-month period is what the 340B program brought to hospital. So without, and I'll just, without clinics, without the prescriptions and so forth that are being generated for the care that's being provided at the clinics, we would not see or the hospital would not experience that, that level of 340B support. Drawbacks, there are some drawbacks though of having a provider-based RHC. And again, you know, operating under that licensure and governance of a hospital, you obviously must follow both hospital and clinic regulations. I mean, there's a lot of regulatory steps and requirements that must be met. I mentioned earlier about some administrative overhead, staffing and so forth. That does increase cost because that cost does get stepped down or allocated from the hospital to the clinics. For clarity purposes, when we advance forward here in a minute, look at the financials. That cost does not include this cost I'm referencing about that's on the hospital books that ultimately gets stepped down. You may need more infrastructure, EMR integration, payroll billing, other type of revenue cycle, revenue cycle support compared to an independent RHC. So you're able to draw on the hospital for that help and support. If you're operating independently, obviously you've got to fill that need. So that can be a drawback of having provider-based as well. And then decision-making, decision-making is at the hospital versus at the individual clinic level in that situation. So just again, just for public purposes and others in the room here, just for reference, you know, the hospital does operate two rural health, provider-based rural health clinics. You've got the Williams Medical Center East in Carabelle and West in Appalachia Cola. Again, providing the primary care and specialty services that does rotate out. Got the addresses here where they're located. I know Susie's in the room as well, from a clinic manager standpoint, but the services provided. And these services that are provided are listed on the website so that the community and folks know that this is what you can expect to receive and levels of care that you can expect to receive at the clinics. Now let's jump into the financial performance of these two clinics. And, and I want to share this information with the Commissioners. I think it's very important, you know, I talked about, a little bit about the history of a rural health clinic, why it's important to a hospital and potentially some drawbacks of being part of a hospital. But I think this is, this is important to share with, with everyone as well as far as the financial, current financial snapshot or performance of each of these clinics. And the first one I have up on the screen is the Medical Center East. And this is the fiscal year-to-date, FYTD fiscal year-to-date financials. And what we have prepared, and this is something we are preparing on an ongoing monthly basis and we will share this every month with the hospital board, the leadership team and at the request of the Commissioners as often as needed. But this is a month-end snapshot of the operating margin for the Williams Medical Center East facility. And these are year-to-date numbers, so it's, we are 9:30 fiscal year-end. So this is October 24 through March of 25. So you're looking at a six-month window of information here. And you can see that the patient, the gross patient revenue, that's the top line, which is the amount of revenue that the clinics are generating from a chargeable standpoint for the care that's being provided to the patients. The layout of this has, you know, far-left column, obviously from a financial standpoint, does show the six-month performance. We do have a budget column. And for clarity purposes around the budget, you know, this is a budget internally-driven, built budget for the clinics, each clinic, as well as we have one from EMS, we have one for the hospital. And I will mention and go ahead and mention, we are working on breaking this down into the departmental level as well for, for all the department leaders on a go-forward basis. So I want to put some clarity around the budget and I can obviously dive into further details on that as needed. And then in the far-right column, you see the, or not, near the far-right column, you'll see the March 24. That's the six-month period in March of 24. So more or less it's the year-over-year performance as well as comparison to the current versus budget. So just kind of moving down, you'll notice that from a gross margin for any type of subsidy, because the subsidy that is provided to East, you'll see from a margin standpoint, the clinic East is, is doing well from an overall margin standpoint. Then obviously you could see how the subsidy does impact that. You'll see the adjusted gross margin and again, that's revenues less expenditures with the subsidy included as well. And I put a couple of notes there at the bottom because I think it's important as well to share and gives a, an illustration of, of the level of care or as far as the volume of business that the clinic East is generating. You'll notice that for that, and David alluded to this before we stepped up about the overall performance year-over-year. But when I look at, you know, for this fiscal year-to-date, again, this six-month period, you know, the clinic has seen over 2,000 visits, so they care for over 2,000 patients in that aspect and approximately about 337 patients they're seeing per month. That's a busy clinic. I mean, they're doing, they're doing a good job and you can reference the numbers up above as well and that reflects that. From a collection standpoint, in the same picture of time that we're looking at, clinic East has collected roughly just under 252,000 in actual cash collections driven from the care that's being provided after they've gone through the revenue cycle process, which equates to about $124 a visit. And, and the reason I put, share that obviously it's information we want to share with, with everyone, but also when you look at the comparison between what a provider-based rural health clinic gets paid on a per visit versus if it were an independent, independent is typically a lower reimbursed per visit entity. So that provider-based, that overhead allocation, that draw, that support does help increase rates.
Question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Looking at the two, the only one I see is subsidy totaled under is the one East, but not West.
That's correct.
So we're giving all the subsidy to East, but not West?
You want to share?
Because if that's true, then the numbers are about break even and they're both losing money.
Yeah, yeah, the numbers, you know, there's a hundred and, I think maybe $120,000 that the county has appropriated to the East clinic. And that was, that was a number years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
I misunderstood. I thought it was just to the clinics period.
Yeah, that, that goes directly to the West.
But if you take that number out, that 54702 is minus 65,000. If you take those two 60s out, just for a note of clarification.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and again, the gross margin for East is 354 on a budget of 306. So without subsidy, it is up 48,000 versus a budget. And it's up nearly just under, just under 100,000 year-over-year. That's before any subsidy.
Right. So if they're seeing 300...
37.
37 average visitors a month, how are they still losing money without that subsidy?
Well, from a, from a money standpoint, if you look at, again, gross patient, and again, the scratch subsidy, let's look up above at gross margin before RHC subsidy. Revenue, the gross revenue less operating expenses is three, is a positive 355 versus a budget of 306, which is a positive 48,000 increased to budget. That's before any subsidy. The subsidy, the subsidy helps bring an additional, you know, 60,000 during this six-month period to that adjusting gross.
I thought the subsidy was 120,000 a month.
Year, year.
Okay, that's what I, okay. That's why I was confused.
Yes, sir.
Now you see where my math was at.
Yeah.
I was like, okay, something was going on here. All right, that works.
Thank you. And then, you know, I'll toggle over to Wes and to Chairman Jones's comment. You'll see there's no subsidy listed on this gross margin or profit-loss statement. But, you know, similar mechanics here as far as the layout. But again, looking at Wes' clinic, you know, it's seen 14, over 1,400, just over 1,400 visits during that six-month period, about 233 a month on average. And again, from a collection standpoint though, generating about the same amount per visit that East is generating as well. And again, stronger number per visit versus what an independent would bring. Some things though that we want to look at, you know, and again, I wanted to, you know, I appreciate the opportunity again to come back in front of, in front of everyone and share, obviously the, you know, give a brief thumbnail on rural health clinics, the provider-based situation, benefits and drawbacks and currently, and the current financial snapshot. But I did want to bring forward, you know, you know, we're going to continue vetting through these clinics. How do we, how do we get these clinics to achieve best practices? Are we achieving best practices? We, we appear to be doing well financially, appears to be doing well. But are there ways to continue to improve? And we certainly think so. I mean, there's always, obviously always ways to improve. So we're going to be looking at continuing to strengthen the visibility and transparency of the data and information. So we're going to be working on a benchmarking assessment that's going to be provided through us. And we're going to be looking at, you know, certainly the coding and documentation within the RHC, but looking at ways that, that can we grow these practices, right? Can we grow more primary care-based services in this community, which will ultimately help continue to support the Williams Memorial Hospital? And we firmly believe in that. And, and, you know, we'll look into the current operations, but you'll look at the market and what business can be, can be ultimately captured and/or redirected here through our, through the expansion of any types of primary care services that can be provided. We'll have some comparisons to KPIs or key performance indicators that will show and give an illustration that compares our clinics here versus, you know, peer group clinics. So that, you know, we're not only relying on the data that we put in front of you, but you're also able to see that comparison versus other, other groups and other entities. So you can see that from a benchmarking standpoint, how are we performing? And, you know, we'll have those dashboards available and we're going to, we're going to pull that to get information together. I'd love to be able to bring that forward to the Commissioners once that information is prepared so that we can, you know, again, gain further understanding of how the overall financial performance of those two clinics are. And, you know, certainly always continue to monitor the regulatory requirements, ensuring that these clinics are not only providing the best care, but they're obviously meeting the regulatory requirements and guidance that needs to be provided to them. I know I rambled through a lot there pretty quickly, but I'll be glad to address any questions or, you know, Susie or anyone here that can help, anything we can help provide.
I have one. And I don't know if this is something we're going to cover later, but is there any way y'all can track on how many referrals the clinics are sending back to the hospital? Because I'm, I mean, when we were talking with, when we were doing the Baker Tilly, you know, they were, James. He had mentioned that the clinics were operating at a loss, but it wasn't taking into consideration the revenue that was generating off referrals. So it kind of offset. And I just didn't know if you, if y'all had that information, you know.
Yeah, yeah, the clinics use, and Susie can speak more intelligently probably than myself on this, but the clinics utilize the Athena EMR platform. So it's a platform that's, it's a robust platform. There's a lot of good information in there. I'm confident that it does track the referrals up. I'll let her share that information, but there is a lot of good information inside of that system.
Good morning. I'm Susie Busker. So yes, we do have in our EMR system a referral reporting. And I can speak from experience that our providers do go to the first source, which is Williams because for location, most importantly, for our patients, because many patients don't have transportation. And a lot of it is driven by insurance plans as well. So, you know, I have to take that into consideration and the specialty groups too, so.
What Jim really was saying is that also is that, you know, a provider, for example, I go see my provider, they refer me back to the hospital for radiology, you know, outpatient. So that's revenue for the hospital. Sometimes that's not captured in the clinic revenue as well. And then the 340B as well, you know, to be, to get the breaks for the clinic in the 340B program, you've got to be a hospital base. But that revenue also is, the clinic is generating that revenue also. So, you know, it's not all black and white that you see, but these other things that you do see with the referral basis coming into the hospital, outpatient part of the hospital, as well as the ED, you know, they see some, something there that need to be referred to the ED that they can't take care of, emergency department.
That's, that's, that's what I was asking, is do y'all have a clear image of what revenue is being generated like from, from referrals? Like blood work, radiology, you know, those types of things that the clinics are feeding back to the hospital?
Yeah, we do our, we do our own blood work within the clinics for patients, both our patients and outside patients as well. We have radiology up at East.
Yeah, no, he's talking about the finance.
Yeah, yeah, I can give a quick update on that. Yeah, absolutely. The hospital is able and has data available that shows the number of tests that are coming from the clinics that's being referred to, being referred from the clinics to the hospital that's being performed on the patients. So we do have, we do have the capability, I guess, I think to answer your question, the capability of being able to generate how much revenue is being produced at the hospital by provider. And if it's a provider from our clinics, then we can track, okay, X, you know, Suzette, Dana, whomever, this is how much revenue from their support or their referral to the hospital is being provided by the hospital, whether it's imaging, lab, what have you. Yeah, that, that can be available.
Will that show up under a hospital report?
It'll show up under a hospital, yeah, it will show up under a hospital report. That is correct. So that, that's a great, that's a great point because you do not see that number in these financials. You don't see that overhead number that I referenced earlier as well from the overall expenditure standpoint that gets stepped down. This is just straight strictly what we call gross margin-related expenditures, which is revenue from the, from the, from the clinic alone, not the hospital-based revenue. And then expenditures for the clinic alone, not hospital overhead expenditures as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. David, if you could just kind of help break down what these... Oh, sorry. David B. The breakdown of how you did this, this report. So salaries and wages, that's self-explanatory. Professional fees would consist of things like, can you elaborate on?
Sure, sure. Typically, your professional fees, as I mentioned earlier, you've got provider oversight support. And so Dr. Conrad, I know, provides the, the medical oversight. So you do have to contract to pay for that professional service.
Okay, supplies, obviously, galls, things like that, syringes. Contract services, I guess, would be things like...
Largest expenditure for, for contract and/or purchase services. And I just referenced that the clinics operate utilizing the Athena EMR platform, electronic medical record platform.
Software.
So it's software-related and the services that are billed, obviously are, is a contract-related purchase service expenditure.
And then the other expenses, what falls under that category?
That's, you know, I hate to say it that way, but it's all other, right? It's all, it's unrelated to contract-related type activities, supplies. So it's more or less utilities, other types of, you know, miscellaneous type related expenditures that's going to be provided, you know, specifically for the clinic. Outside of any of those, and again, hate to say it that way, outside of any of those other categories. It's kind of the all other.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. David Walker, I want to make the public aware, I don't think the public understand that we have lost all the providers in Carabelle with Dr. Catlin moving to East Point. And this clinic is the only thing that we have over there as far as medical. And I know in the last few weeks and months, because we've had such honest discussions about where the hospital is and the clinics are, the ambulance service and stuff, people are starting to ask questions of me over there. And the one question they ask is, whatever happened to the pharmacy? So I wanted him to address that if you don't mind.
Yeah, and so the pharmacy, you know, we kind of, we had put that on hold depending on, depending if the hospital moved to REH status, rural emergency hospital status. You know, we would not qualify for the 340B program. Now, the only reason why we were doing the pharmacy in Carabelle is that to take advantage of the hospital 340B program because you can get the discount pricing. And so the thought would be, you know, do we start a pharmacy in Carabelle? And then if the county, whoever, whoever they partner with moved towards REH status, then you have to really close that down. And so really you want to get stable, which way you're going first. If you keep the critical hospital designation, then you can roll the pharmacy in there, you know, with a lot of things happening now at the federal government level, you know, with that. So that's the only reason why, you know, we haven't really moved towards that yet, you know.
Yeah, okay, well, they got their answer now.
Yeah, I just want to just clarify that, so, you know.
If you remember, Mr. Chairman, the chairman and I have been having some discussions about trying to find a way, not through the hospital, but through economic development means. but through economic development means, to get a pharmacy somewhere between East Point and Carabel. It's, it's, it's really needed. And so, yeah, we've had those conversations.
They haven't come to anything yet, but we.
But we're trying, you know, we're looking at every avenue that we can, and, you know, we'll see.
Yeah, because you look at, in, in the Carabel, from the other side of East Point going on, on, you know, there, you know, where, where you're at, the clinics, you know, the health department do a little bit, some, some kind of services, but really, the clinic in Carabel is it there. And so, you know, you're really trying to really increase those services. Now, there's some things, some money that may be coming through the Florida Legislature, you know, that will allow some funding that, you know, we may be able to do some mobile clinics. For example, you know, my idea is to get a bus, you know, a mobile medical bus, you know. Then you can, you can take these buses, you know, you go to the island, you can also go to Lenox Village, you probably go to Alligator Point, you know, try to increase those kind of services, the medical services. But the pharmacy, right now for us, you know, we're kind of like in a holding pattern for that.
Well, and I feel like in the direction that we're going in, because we're moving forward with this and we're not stopping, we're getting an answer on our medical care in Franklin County and what the future of it's going to be. That's one of the things that you can look at and see, because, you know, you all know the span of the county, seventy miles wide, and Crawfordville is the first, Appalachia's just over here, and then, you know, to the, to the west. But, you know, in our, talking of the services that we need to provide, look at that. And this is just for the whole county, look at this. Because now, I mean, over here, you've got CVS and Byright. But talking on the services, because I am a patient at the clinic over in East Point, and I always will be, because they've always treated me right. When my test needs to be done, I come to the hospital over here. I use, I try to access it as much as possible, because I like to support our county. And I like services to be there, you know. So just to, you know, let you know, I'm one. Now, if I had a specialty like my knees, I had to go to Tallahassee. But otherwise, I try to stay within the county and provide, you know, and I'm glad the services are provided up there, at the hospital, so.
Yeah, the, the thing with pharmacies, it seems odd to even think about it, but I can remember, well, all of us who grew up, except for you, you're a little bit younger than the rest of us. In the eighties, there were five, there were five pharmacies in the county. There was two in Appalachia, two in Carabel, one in East Point. There were five.
Wow.
Lanier.
It wasn't, it wasn't the desert we're looking at today, as far as some of the stuff. You know what I mean? There just really were. So, you know, they're definitely needed. It's definitely something, we don't want everybody to run to Walmart for everything. You know, so it's just one of those things, that once we work through this to see how it's going to go, it would be nice if somebody would do it on the public side, but if they don't, we do need to really look at it if it's something that's still in our willhouse. It'd be better if it come from the public side. But, you know, we, we can't put somebody in business, so, you know what I mean? Or make them want to have a pharmacy business, so there's that. I do want to ask you a question, Mr. David. And we've talked about it several times, but I, and the only reason I'm asking is because I continue to get calls about it. They might be referencing the same timeframe, I don't know. But do we have the phones fixed in Carabel?
Yeah, well, we have a new phone system now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm pleased to report that, so it's a lot better. And I, from Suzie, I mean, she's the one that's there, you know, although we still got to work out some kinks, you know, but we, the phone system went in, I think we implemented last month, was it last month? Yeah, yeah, last month. So we have a new system in place. I'm hearing good things about it, although we still have some kinks. You know, for example, I called the hospital last night and went to some voicemail.
But we do have somebody there that also answers the phone.
Oh, yeah, we have somebody there answering the phone, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I just, I hear a lot of stuff about it, and we've talked about it at length several times. It's nothing new. The other thing is, and just so I know, how are we, how are our current structure in our clinics? In other words, are our clinics being run on an appointment basis only, or are walk-ins allowed?
Well, we have walk-ins also, and Suzie can speak more in detail, come on Suzie. Yeah, we have, yeah, we have appointment basis, you know, but then also we have the schedule open for walk-ins as well. And Suzie, we have some numbers.
We, we have walk-ins every day at both clinics. And it's also, you know, it is time-based. We have, we're primary care, so we have already booked out appointments for quite some time. We do allow for emergencies to come in. We allow for, if we can work somebody in because they have a severe migraine headache or sinus infection, we do get them in within time and.
The, the reason I'm asking, and the reason it's important, and I've actually been through it a couple of times, for whatever, I've been having, going with this cough now for about a year. But it's, it's good that you have appointments, all that works fine. It's good that all that works that way. But if you come in, here's, here's where we're really expending money in our healthcare system. If I come into one of the clinics and they, and I'm sick, my employer's going to want to, I'm missing work, my employer's going to want to note for the next day saying, I went to the doctor. And they say, well, we can see you at three thirty. I'm probably going to wind up going to the emergency room and being seen where I don't need to be seen, because I'm going to get seen right now. And that's the most expensive way to do healthcare in this county. That's why it's very important that as many as we can, we work in walk-ins to our clinics. It is very important, because I know the one in East Point, even though it's a federally qualified health center, they've also switched to more of a model, if you don't have an appointment, you don't get seen. It don't matter how sick you are.
Yeah, we are, we are one of the few that take walk-ins. I don't think the other group in Appalachia does either.
And I'm just stressing how important that is. Because if we don't take walk-ins, they're going to wind up walking into the ER, and now we're treating them the most expensive way we can treat them.
Yeah, you know something, and that's something that we'll, you know, we'll continue to take a look at, because we try to walk-ins on a consistent basis. But the Florida statutes now is changing some of the criteria for EDs, emergency departments, meaning that if somebody come in as a, should be a primary care, you know, the hospital is going to be responsible now for tracking that, and then we have to make reports to the state on that, so they're trying to get away from that. Also, you know, as we look at our, the growth of our clinics, you know, maybe looking at some kind of, I hate to call it mini-clinics, you know, like a walk-in, like maybe a certain time, you know, try to get some walk-in hours to try to, try to accommodate those that are sick and need to be seen. Hopefully, even with the medical bus, I'm just putting it out there, if the money comes, that's what we're going to do. We can begin to look at that as a walk-in center clinic.
Yeah, Mr. David, even if you, and I, I don't propose to know how to run the clinic, that's not what I'm saying. Even if you had the walk-in hours to be from when you open in the morning to about nine thirty and all the rest of your appointments, then that gives, everybody would know over time that if I'm waking up and I'm sick and I'm missing work, I can go be seen as a walk-in versus trying to wait till two o'clock and see if, you know what I mean? It's just hit or miss when you do it the other way.
Yeah, yeah, but we'll brainstorm, continue to try to be.
Yeah.
But just, just a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of quick questions. And, and really, it's what, what brought up earlier when we were talking about the gentleman that sent out the hack job or whatever. But I know in the past, we talked about cybersecurity. Have we, have we got any, anywhere with that?
Yes.
Or have y'all?
Yes, well, right now, the hospital is going through an IT risk assessment. And it's more, it's more detailed, really, a very detailed risk assessment. And I'm hoping to share with the board tomorrow that in, in the month of May, their report will be completed, and then we will have a closed session to talk about that. But they, they review, they reviewing everything with IT, not just the, the computer hookups. I mean, they looking at policies, it's, it's a very deep-dialed. And the people that we have are experts, you know, they work, do a lot of work at the White House. So it's just, it was more than we thought, you know, because usually the IT assessment that the auditor recommended, you know, we got, they did that little part, but they're doing a whole deep dive and a whole IT system, you know, at the hospital, as well as the clinics do.
Like I said, it just popped up earlier. And one more thing, and this, this does relate to the clinics. Patient load, are we at full capacity at East now? Or, or do we have some more room for?
Well, we, well, as a CEO, I always think we always have room. But, you know, Suzie, as our practice manager, she can come on up here. You know, I, I like to kind of push the number, you know, as much as we can. I think East is, you know, I think we still have some capacity. You know, Dana's schedule's kind of busy, you know, really. And then Suzette over here in, in Appalachia Cola, you know, we definitely got more room. Now, she's gotten busy, like I told you, the numbers have increased ten percent in East and nine percent over here from October to, to March now. And then last fiscal year, it was twenty percent increase, so the numbers are increased. But I think we still have some room to squeeze some people in the schedule. And that's what we'll take another look at as well when we do the provider assessments of the clinic. You know, that'll let us know really where we are with that, Suzie.
We've also, we have, that's why we have a, a part-time nurse practitioner, Amanda Page, who comes to both the West Clinic and the East Clinic. And that's, we, we do our overflow there with Dana. And both Suzette do a great job of working people in and seeing them as many as they can.
Well, I think if you take the, the number of patients by the days you guys are open, I think it's fair to say that East is overloaded and, and West is busy.
Right, but as you know, the, the culture of it is too, is that people in Carabel will not come down to Appalachia if we have the opening. They don't want to drive that, drive that far. So that's why we hired a, a part-time nurse practitioner. But also in Appalachia Cola, Suzette competes with the ER. She competes with Dr. Farr, she competes with Northwest Florida, and Carmichael and Catlin now. So there's a difference in how the insurance has spread patients around and who they send them to.
Yeah, that's right. Any other questions, Commissioner?
Yes, I got one from Mr. Walker. Uh, Mr. Walker, you touched on it a little while ago.
It's one of my questions right here about the RHC subsidy.
Yes.
About the hundred and twenty.
Yes.
You mentioned that it is, I guess it goes to Williams East. What prompted that agreement? I was before my time, so.
Yeah, yeah, many, yeah, many years ago, I think Commissioner Sanders probably could have been the only commissioner on here, so she probably would know more. Now, I, I was with the health department then, you know, at that time. But it was many, many years ago. There, you know, the, you know, the hospital CEO, I'm sure at that time, you know, realized they needed more help for the, with the Carabel clinic, really to subsidize a practitioner, I think, could have been a physician too. I think we had a physician over there too. And they got kind of, to be blunt with you, it was a little friction between the health department and the commission at that time. You know, so we, they, I'd say they just, they grabbed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of our budget at the health department then, and, but then to go to the clinic, and, but they couldn't.
Sounds like you remember very well.
I, I, yeah, I remember, because I was over that.
He doesn't know everything.
Yeah, but I don't know all the details about it, but Commissioner Sanders was involved in that. But it happened many, many years ago, really to help offset the practitioners as well as the physician costs in that area, because nothing was over there.
Can I comment, Mr. Chairman?
Please do.
How it came about, Commissioner Crim, it, we had a brand-new clinic and didn't have the money to fund this stuff in there. So that's how it came about. We had no, we had no funding for the actual operation of the clinic. We had a brand-new clinic, but didn't have, had to do that, so that's where it came from.
In addition, I believe, at the time, the governor at the time had, disallowed DOH from doing.
Governor Scott had, primary care services.
Yes, primary care services. And we were like, kind of stuck in, kind of like, wait a minute, if there's no primary care at all over there. So that's when we shifted money over, and Mr. Walker's correct, from what we were giving, I believe, the health department for, for primary care, and we shifted that to the clinic.
Primary, yeah, because the, the governor did that at that time.
Yeah, yeah, Governor Scott at that time. Yeah, he, yeah, either Scott or Bush, they privatized. Yeah, what they did, they, they wanted to privatize healthcare out from public, of, of the public setting. So they told us, you know, be true to your mission, treat and, I mean, prevent intervention and move the primary care focus to the communities. And so that's why that money, I mean, that service was shifted. We had to close down the primary care bases in Carabel at that time.
Then, Mr. Chairman, that, that hundred and twenty thousand comes out of the capital outlay side of the.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Which was easier to do than taking it out of your general revenue, because that money was.
Yes, I'd say that.
Yeah, you're right.
Commissioner, if you threw out one thing I want to mention, that's totally away from most of the discussion we've had today. Tomorrow, I know the, the Board of Directors meet at Williams. I've asked Mr. Walker to put on the agenda if the Board of Directors would consider moving their meetings here. I've gotten complaints, and I, I heard it myself, audio is a little.
I'll agree, I'll agree with that. And there's a echo in the background.
Yeah, and, and, you know, Mr. Walker, he, he, he knew about it. He went out, he got a proposal for a new sound system. It was.
No, it's not, it's just too much money.
It's a lot of money.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty for cafeteria that they're meeting in to ret, I'm sorry, I think it's a lot easier here. So if they agree, what I will, if they agree, he'll let me know. And I will sit down and talk to the county judge and see if there's a day I know for sure that will never have a conflict record, and then we'll try and move those meetings over here. I think, I think it'd be a good idea. And one more thing, I am tentatively scheduled on the thirtieth. Mr. David, David Bullard will go with, the other day, David B., to Taylor County to meet with their CEO and a couple of their board members to look at that model that we were all talking about with TMH involved in the management, and then I will report back to the board.
Yeah, because they're currently using that model, correct?
Yes, and I think David said that it's probably the closest model he thinks will work best for Franklin, for Williams, Franklin County.
Sounds good.
So, so far, it's set for the thirtieth, I believe. That's it.
Any other questions for Mr. Walker?
Yes, Mr. Walker, when y'all go make that visit, one of the things I'm curious is the employee benefits under that model, so that's what I'll be asking. And you all about.
Taylor County, is what you want, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I can, yeah, I can, I can call Lauren to get that information for you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right?
I got to switch to Louie's.
Okay. You just let us know when you're ready, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for letting me be involved in this. It's really pretty awesome to see everybody and have the opportunity to help EMS hopefully transition to the county. Today, I'd have a presentation I want to go over, I want to go over what we currently need in the transition process and why certain steps are important. And then I want to go over structure, potential different structure models for EMS, cost, and see where, where we can go from there. All right, so our current needs, the biggest one we have right now is a COPCN, which is a certificate of need, also known as a certificate of public convenience and necessity. We can't do anything in the transition until we have this. And if I'm not mistaken, that would be a board motion and vote. I, I'm not sure how that would work, but that is going to be the next step of what we need to do anything else in this process. Shortly after that, we would need to go ahead and get a contract with the medical director over in Wakulla, we've just got through with this process. So there is a potential of piggybacking off of what we've done. The current medical director is okay with coming on, and he would be okay with doing a contract that wouldn't start until the service actually starts. But getting that contract in place so we can get the DEA license, get, with our vendors about getting medications and getting everything in place, the sooner the better. Because that's a process to get the DEA license with the address here in Franklin County on it. So getting that done in the near future would be really good. Billing company, that's obviously really important, we need the money. Billing companies, have a meeting with one on Thursday, tomorrow. And it looks like, you know, Wakulla, we're going to piggyback off of Leon County's RFP they just got there doing a couple of months ago. If that's a billing company we want to go with. That's also a process, that's not as urgent as a COPC and a medical director, though. State requirements, so the only holdup I could potentially see happening is a communications plan. I've been having trouble getting ahold of the state. In the state licensure process, you've got to have an FCC license. Williams Communications is saying the way we're set up, we do not have to have one. And I've left several messages with the state communications department, so I'm trying to get clarification on that. Other than that, most of the stuff we need is going to come from the medical director and the COPCN. There's a state requirement list, but some of it's like trauma transport protocols, DEA license. The majority of it's going to be with the medical director.
Louis, the, the COPCN that you're mentioning, is that something that we can have presented to us maybe at our next meeting, so we can have the possibility to make a motion? have the possibility to make a motion and vote and send them that forward? Attorney Shuler, what does that look like? Do you know anything about this? I'm sure you're you're our legal counsel, so I'm sure you got to weigh in at some point.
I will, however, this is, A, the first I've heard of the certificate of need. Uh, and secondly, we haven't directly run a hospital and or an ambulance like that in a long time, so I will have to research it and get back to you, but I mean, it's just a matter of ponying up and getting ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Louie.
Uh, so the structure. Uh, I'm going to go over several different models and, uh, the rationale, the pros and cons of each model. Uh, we will be going over the costs, uh, there is a disclosure on the costs, these are estimates. Uh, there's a lot of things that I can't account for at this time. The pay I use is an estimation of what the pay might be. Uh, and that's going to be the big cost of each model. Because FRS is calculated off of, uh, how much the individual makes. Uh, BLS, ALS, and the chase truck, the captain response, uh, I want to go over what each of these actually are, so we can have an understanding of, uh, what we're looking at. Uh, a BLS truck is a basic life support, it's a two EMTs, or by state law, you can have an EMT and an ambulance driver, somebody certified to just drive the ambulance. Uh, this is going to be basic, uh, essentially a transport truck. Uh, they can't do many interventions, uh, blood pressures, they can bandage, splint, uh, assist the patient and take in some medications. Uh, but the actual interventions is, uh, they're not allowed to do. With advanced life support, the ALS is when you're going to have a paramedic and an EMT, or two paramedics is where you get the interventions, where we start the IVs, uh, innovate the patients, where we can breathe for them, uh, and do all the extra stuff. Uh, the captain response of a chase truck, uh, this can do everything, uh, ALS ambulance can, except for transport. So let's say that we have all the ambulances out of county right now, and we have a captain on the chase truck. Uh, that chase truck is equipped to respond to a call if somebody is not breathing. And there on scene, they can go ahead and innovate and start breathing for the patient while we're waiting on a truck to get to us. So it can do everything, uh, the ambulance can except for transport. All right, so next, we're going to go through, uh, some surrounding counties. Uh, one thing I do want to say about this is I don't want to compare us to counties around us. Every county has different needs. And we need to structure ourselves around what the need for Franklin County is. The reason I was showing this is we'll get into here in a couple of minutes, is, uh, there's a average as far as a response model on how many calls each ambulance does and how the billing works as far as reimbursement on how we can pay for that. So Gulf County currently has three ALS ambulances and no chase truck at the moment. But I'm told they are looking at adding that in the near future. Uh, Calhoun County has two ALS ambulances, they're a transfer ambulance. Their transfer ambulance is a, it don't just do transfers from Calhoun to TMH, they also do from Panama City to Valdosta or wherever. Uh, so they do a lot of additional stuff which generates a ton of revenue, but they're doing a lot of, uh, calls outside the county as well. Uh, Wakulla County, I added this just because I can pull numbers really easy, I can give you a really accurate numbers for Wakulla. Um, it's hard, it's not even comparable because it's a fire rescue, it's combined fire and EMS. Uh, we currently have four ALS ambulances. We do have a chase truck, but that's a battalion chief that does fire and EMS. But like I said, showing the numbers and being able to pull accurate numbers, um, that's why I wanted to add it. All right, so this is a call volume for each individual county for twenty twenty-four. Uh, Gulf County and Calhoun, I got these numbers, or James Osteen got the numbers for me by calling the the two directors of the services. Uh, but Gulf County had three thousand four hundred nineteen trans, uh, calls, total nine-one-one calls. And two thousand six hundred and fifty transports. So the nine-one-one was activated, uh, the blue is, uh, how many times nine-one-one was activated. Uh, the purple is how many times they actually transported the patient to the hospital. And they did that with three ambulances. Uh, Calhoun County had two, twenty-nine hundred and thirty-one and twenty-four forty-nine uh, with the two ambulances and a transport truck. Uh, you see the transports and the total nine-one-one calls are a lot closer together than the other counties, and I think that's due to the transfer truck uh, generates more transports. Uh, Wakulla had, uh, fifty-two hundred nine-one-one calls and thirty-three hundred transports with the four ambulances, and here in Franklin, uh, we had, uh, one thousand eight hundred forty-five with twelve hundred. So I put billing, a total call volume in billing, because billing is based off of your transports. Uh, that's what we call billable calls. If we don't have the transports, we can't generate the money. So i- if our billing is a hundred percent perfect, um, we still don't have the tran- uh, transports to compare with, say, Gulf County or Calhoun. Uh, that's a similar size, uh, uh, Calhoun is a similar sized county, uh, their, way they're laid out is quite different, but.
And, Mr. Chairman, sorry, Lou, let me stop you there. The, these numbers are based on a year time period?
Yes, one year.
Okay, and that's twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four. Um, Wakulla and Franklin, I know for sure it's from January to December. I'm not sure the actual timeframe on Gulf and Calhoun, I know it's a year, but I'm not sure if they did fiscal year or calendar year.
Louie, my question, so this is from last year, correct?
Correct.
Uh, my other question is, with Calhoun, I know, I guess Liberty transport to Calhoun sometimes?
Yes.
So Calhoun numbers are not, or Liberty numbers is not in Calhoun's, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I want to make sure.
Yeah, Li- Liberties are separate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so calls per ambulance per day. Um, the reason I wanted to put this in here is this is a metric that I've currently been tracking. And Wakulla to try to get a fifth ambulance, and we're not at the point yet of being able to justify a fifth ambulance, uh, because of the call volume. Um, Gulf County has, for each ambulance, an average of, uh, three point one-two calls per ambulance per day. Calhoun's a little over four, Wakulla's three point five, and Franklin, we're at one point six or one point seven, if you want to round up. Uh, this is a, a metric that's normal to use. There's a lot of there's a lot more that goes into this than just, uh, how many calls each ambulance is are running. I mean, you're talking about distance, travel time, how long you're at the hospital, uh, for the availability of ambulance. Uh, but this is a good metric that's used nationwide as far as justification of additional resources. So mileage, so loaded miles, that is, uh, when the patient gets into the ambulance, the mileage starts then, and then the mileage ends when you get to the hospital. So that's what loaded miles is, and the average for Franklin for last year, this came over, uh, the PCR is forty miles. That's taking into account every time you take somebody a half mile in Appalachia to Weems, or if you go all the way to, uh, Shands. So that's our to- overall average for the whole year for all of the twelve hundred calls. Uh, Wakulla, I know, I know, uh, Franklin and Wakulla's accurate numbers is twenty-five miles. And, uh, Calhoun and Gulf, I had to estimate. I I don't have the exact number, I base it off their call volume and, uh, the distance, average distance to the different hospitals, uh, so tho- those two are going to be estimations.
So our, our forty is because of transports too, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, that that's transports, uh, so, um, according to Google, from Weems to TMH is eighty miles. But at the same time, if we're responding to, uh, uh, say, your mom's house.
Yeah.
And we take her to Weems, that's a one mile or half a mile, so you're looking at all the transports, the loaded miles averaged out over the year.
Wow. We have less calls but more loaded miles.
Yeah, you see, there's a.
Yeah, because how long, how long we are, and how many times we go out of the county to transport.
Yeah, so last year, there was a hundred and eighty-five transfers, uh, from Weems. Uh, that would include Panama, TMH, and I'm sure there are some, uh, long distance ones, uh, Fort Walton, Shands. I didn't, don't have those exact numbers, but it's a total of a hundred and eighty-five, is what our, our reporting software told me.
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry.
We're, we're still a ways away from it, but I I would like to make sure this board is aware. In discussions we have been having with Mr. O'Brien, he mentioned the fact that they actually have the ability to send, as long as they're going from hospital to hospital, to send a transfer truck to Franklin County to keep the ambulances in the county and they can do the transfers, or at least assist us with transfers.
Yeah, that's something.
What we're working on.
Yeah, that's something that is offered in a lot of places.
It would be a bit poor.
So I wanted to put this in here just to kind of give us a better idea of, uh, distances. Uh, Gulf County and and I put thirty-five miles, it depends on what part of the county you're in, it might be different in Weewall or but I just hit Gulf County and did a map to, uh, Bay Medical, thirty-five miles. I did the same thing in Calhoun, uh, forty to Bay, fifty-four to TMH. Uh, Wakulla, i- if you're in the middle of Profferville, it's right at twenty-three miles. Uh, if you're in Sopshoppy, that's going to change quite a bit, though. Uh, Franklin, like I said, Wakulla, uh, according to Google, eighty miles from Weems to TMH, fifty-seven from Weems to Bay. Uh, fifty-seven miles from Caribou to TMH, and twenty-three from Caribou to Weems. So when we start looking at that average, uh, we're taking into account all the calls and where we went. And, uh, I don't have the exact numbers with me, uh, but we did the majority of the calls went to Weems. Initially, and then the second was TMH, and, uh, two hundred of those or one hundred and eighty-five would have been transfers.
How many calls? Alligator Point, St. Teresa, Ballpoint.
All right, so.
Where did most of those calls, where did they go to? When does it call?
All right, so twenty twenty-four, there was thirty-eight calls in Alligator Point, eighty in Landark. Caribou had five hundred and twenty-five, East Point had three hundred and seventy-one, St. George Island a hundred and seventy-five. And Appalachia Cola, including transfers, was five hundred and seventy-five.
And the ones from the far eastern part of the county, they come to Weems?
The Alligator Point is just as close to go, when you look at mileage, it's just as close to go Tallahassee. So it's honestly a waste of resources and time to come to Weems.
Okay, just, just asking.
All right, so the first model I want to talk about is the current model. We got three ambulances, staff twenty-four hours a day, uh, one captain or chase vehicle. Uh, director, and so that would be a total of twenty-two full-time employees. I have the estimated total cost after billing at one point eight million. That, like I said before, that's an estimation. There's a lot of things that go in these numbers I don't have the answer for just yet. And something I'm going to talk about later is like equipment and the cost of replacing equipment and everything. That I, um, one thing, I guess a good way to say it is, these numbers aren't Aaron approved. So.
Right, right.
So I got the breakdown, nine paramedics, nine EMTs, you need three captains, one per shift. Uh, one director. Operations I have estimated at three hundred thousand. Uh, that's based off the last several years, uh, it's been running around three hundred thousand. Uh, FRS, uh, used a calculation Aaron gave me, that thirty-two point seven something. So it's a total, uh, um, the total cost of the employees times that thirty-two percent. Um, FICA and, uh, health insurance, as you see, the FRS and the health benefits is what's going to be the most expensive. And the more employees you have, the more that's going to go up. Which I have a total at being two, a little over two point five, uh, billing. So with billing, I have that estimated, what I believe is low, but I'd rather be safe than sorry. I don't want to come in here and say that we can collect two million dollars and we only get seven hundred thousand. There's a lot that goes into the billing aspect of it. Um, I believe it's going to be, I personally believe it's going to be a lot more than that, especially the second year. But the first year, I'm not expecting it to be much more than that, because there's a transition period and you have to, uh, get everything in place.
A quick question.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, if you know, or if you have it with you, for the last couple of years, what have we averaged in collecting?
It's been, uh, between seven and eight hundred thousand. Uh, there was, uh, I think, three years ago, uh, there was a few years ago, it's when they transitioned to the new billing company they have, uh, they got over nine hundred thousand. But when I started looking into it, the previous year, the, uh, the collection was really low.
Right.
While the billing company got in place, so that was making up for that. But it's been averaging between seven and eight.
So it's comfortable to use this number, that's the reason?
Um, yeah, I'm really comfortable with this number.
All right.
All right, so the next model is three ambulances with no captain truck. So this would reduce your employees by three to have an, uh, nineteen full-time employees. And I have the estimated cost of one point five. And, uh, after billing. So something the intere- uh, interesting in this is I was curious about the way I was running my numbers and wondering how close I am to being accurate. This is the same model that Gulf County is currently using. And, uh, their actual total budget is two point four. So I started looking at it, trying to figure out where I was off at. Uh, the pay that I estimated for the medics and the EMT are a little bit lower than what Gulf County is, so I think that's where a lot of the difference is with the, uh, the budget, because that would lower the FRS and, uh, everything else. I did three hundred thousand for the, uh, operations as well. Uh, due to, you still have three ambulances and a replacement plan, and the captains don't use as much fuel or equipment. So it's going to be really close to the same for operations. And so, uh, this model is going to be two ambulances, staff twenty-four seven, one captain with a chase vehicle. Uh, or one captive vehicle, which would be three total, a director, that would be sixteen full-time employees. Uh, estimated cost is going to be around one point two, one point three. So a big difference in this one is you have six paramedics and six EMTs, so you have less people. Uh, so that's going to bring your FRS and your, your other, everything else down. I still put three hundred thousand for operations. In reality, that's going to be probably about eighty thousand less than that, because you have, uh, ambulance that's not running as much. But I wanted to, as everything else I'm trying to do, let's better be safe than sorry. I don't want to give you bad numbers and, uh, and come back on me. Uh, the total is going to be, uh, right at two million for this, after billing, uh, around one point two, one point three. So I put this in here because I want to show if you had the two ambulances with a chase vehicle, you're not really downgrading the service or the care you're giving, or the, uh, the with the chase vehicle being in Appalachia, and you still have ambulance in Landark and East Point, and the reason you still have, uh, ambulance in East Point is because you have a straight shot to Appalachia and St. George, so that ambulance can get either way for transport fairly quickly. And with that captain and chase vehicle, a lot of people from what I've seen historically from working here previously in Appalachia Cola, if they're having to wait on the ambulance, they jump in the car and go to Weems. Uh, so having that chase vehicle there for the, the really bad calls, where you can start innovating and start treatment. That your, our quality of care will be there, we'll just have less of a transport capability. With that being said, actually, I will go through this first, um, here's the average cost per day with three ambulances versus two ambulances. Uh, it goes up for the two ambulances, but you're still below a good threshold, just still, even the total nine-one-one calls, you're under, uh, three per day per ambulance. So, uh, some additional options, if you, if the board wanted to go with a two ambulance option. Um, some other things you could consider is putting a transfer truck on that would primarily be doing transfers from Weems. Uh, this could be an eight or twelve hour truck. We have your your peak hours are normally between eight o'clock in the morning and about six or seven at night is when you're the busiest, and that truck would also be available for uh, nine-one-one calls if needed. The best way to do this is if you have the captain on a chase vehicle, you have one employee stay over, so that would be a overtime position. Because you're not going to get somebody to come in for an eight or twelve hour shift, that's going to be really hard to manage. Uh, but you would have one employee instead of two that you'd be paying, paying overtime on. And when a call came out, the captain can jump on the ambulance and drive as well. If you had a, uh, I also have here volunteer certified as an ambulance driver, so this is for a BLS truck only. Uh, by state law, you can certify an individual with, uh, EVAC training, emergency vehicle operation. Um, first aid and CPR, and make them a volunteer for the county. And they can be certified to drive for an EMT. Now, it has to be a BLS truck, so this could be used for transfers going from Weems to TMH or from Weems to Bay. Uh, a lot of the transfers could be BLS. And also with a transfer truck, the only transfers that are mandatory by state law that we respond to, like a nine-one-one call or the true emergent trans- transfers, like, uh, strokes, people have heart attacks, uh, traumas that come in. There's been people that cut their finger, cut their hand off, that's went straight to the, uh, the hospital. So things of that nature would be, uh, we would treat the exact same. So things of that nature would be, uh, we would treat the exact same as a nine-one-one call. Your consults and a lot of the low acuity transfers can be scheduled. It's not always ideal, but when you have, uh, limited resources, that's going to have to happen from time to time. The additional cost is, it was hard for me to estimate this. You could just do the overtime pay for a EMT, you know, and then times three sixty-four. But that would be a rough estimate of what the extra cost would be. It'd be significantly less. So if we had that second, that transfer truck with the two ambulances, I have it on the bottom, the average cost per day, and I calculated this as if the transfer truck is only doing transfers. This is not including if they did a nine-one-one call. All the other trucks are out and they did a nine-one-one call. But that does drop it down to where it's a pretty manageable, in my opinion. So, uh, something I want, I gave you the options, and I wanted to walk through everything to kind of give an outline of where we are and where we could potentially go. When we look at this, we need to look at, uh, we are public safety, so every, every life's important. So I want to be there for everybody that calls nine-one-one, but we have to also look at this from a business perspective and sustainability. If we don't look at this being sustainable and the board decides to take us home county, three years from now, you'll be like, it's not doable. So we needed to look at something that's sustainable, because the money's got to come from somewhere. And, uh, you know, whatever the billing doesn't pay, then it's going to be the one cent sales tax or tax money. So, you know, I want to make sure that you have the information, the best information I can provide to make the best decision.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some questions. First of all, Louis, thank you for putting this together. I appreciate it. I know it took some time from you and Mr. James' perspective to make these phone calls and to get this data. So you were talking about the COPCN and the medical director. What about any policy and procedures? Is that something that we could pull from another county? I know we're different, but essentially we're the same in terms of, you know, you have, you roll up on this call, you have this, this is what you do. You know, I know we have algorithms with ACLS and BLS and things like that, but what's, uh, is that something we could pull?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as far as protocols and, uh, like your, your medical procedures, it'll be just taking the same ones you currently have. As far as the, uh, like county type policies, I'm looking through what I currently have in Wakulla and pulling out what's different, and I'm, I'm getting ready to send a packet to Aaron.
Okay, good, because that's what my next question was. What, what's a county policy or what our county, our county policies would look like versus just the regular, like, Weems entity that has their own policies and such? My next question is, I don't know if Mr. James can answer. Currently, we have, what, three ambulances in the county that run?
Yes.
Twenty-four seven?
Three ambulances and a, uh, captain on a chase truck.
A chase, chase truck. And how many are, they're not all ACLS?
Yes, not every, not every day, but currently they're all ALS, yeah.
Okay, alright.
So something to say about that, uh, I don't, it was hard to actually pull the real numbers. But, uh, in twenty twenty-four, it was roughly, uh, what I pulled is, uh, six days, there was, uh, only, because of staffing shortages. There was only two units available. Running thirty-five days, there was a captain and two units. A hundred and fifty-nine days, uh, the captain, the chase truck was downgraded and the captain was on an ambulance to keep the three ambulances available. And then ninety-one days, there was, uh, one of the trucks was a BLS unit. And, and that's because of, uh, staffing shortages.
I mean, we kind of have to have ALS trucks in this rural area. I mean, it's kind of hard to have a BLS truck and you don't know what your seventy-mile-wide county, car accident, what have you, so... Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to go back to this. I'm not going to tell you what my full decision is on this right now, because I think we need to get all the information together. But I can remember the time when I came on board in nineteen ninety-eight, we only had one BLS truck for the whole county. And it was chaos, chaos. And that's the reason why I'm very supportive of anything that ambulance can do, because we've lived through those times, and, and it's bad. And, uh, I don't want to have to go there. We struggle, we struggle enough for medical healthcare in this county. We don't need to put the ambulance service at jeopardy. And that's what, that's why I'm so glad that you got these numbers up, and James, thank you, and then David Bowlen back there, even Brian Hall. Get these numbers up to where we'll know how we go along. And so we are not kicking that can down that road anymore. We've got to just plan on how we're going to go with the hospital, how we're going to go with the ambulance service, and the people are finally getting the adequate he- healthcare that they need in this county. And so, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate you, uh, going and speaking to Mr. O'Brien with TMH. I think that's a good move. Is it going to be the move that we need to do? We don't know yet.
Nope, we don't know.
We're gathering, we're gathering information and then we'll make that wise, informed decision, hopefully. But, uh, thank you, Louis, for doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Louis, on that, that last, uh, model that you had, that's, that's two ALSs and one BLS part-time or with a volunteer?
I said, that very last slide?
Yeah, that's...
Alright, so that was, uh, in addition, so the two ALS ambulances with a, uh, with a captain. And this is like additional options for that model, where we could add a, a third truck on as a transfer truck for the peak hours throughout the day.
Okay, that's where I kind of got lost. Thank you for the clarification.
But there's no numbers added to that, that's just additional thoughts about it.
Yeah, so that would be, uh, the, uh, after billing, one point two plus whatever overtime's.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's kind of, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of hard to justify, because if they say at the end of their, say, you said eight to eight...
Eight, eight to six, or it would really have to...
Say at five fifty-nine, they get a call for a transport to Tallahassee, I mean, then you're going to pay that however many, what, six, might as well say six hours overtime getting there and back. And if they have to stand on the wall waiting to get to the ER, they can't leave the patient. So they have to stand there and wait with the patient, which could be another however, however long. So that's kind of, that is a, to me, a gamble right there, because you don't know how much you're going to be throwing, how much overtime's going to be accrued.
Yeah, that's why I didn't want to put a number behind it, because you can't predict how often that's... It might happen once a year, or it could happen three hundred times a year, it's hard to say.
Louis, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You answered three of mine already. I took notes on, but my last one is, um, you came here, you came to Franklin, what, two thousand and twelve, thirteen?
Two thousand and ten, uh, sometime in two thousand and ten.
Okay. When you came in ten, what was, what was the county running?
They had ju, there was two ambulances and a BLS truck. It was right when you started the BLS truck, it was at that time of twelve hours a day. So it, it was kind of similar to the two ambulance model. And some days it worked great, and then some days it wasn't enough. And no matter how many trucks we put on, you're always going to see that, that some days it's not going to be enough.
Right. Some days are just those kind of days.
Yeah. Uh, one thing I did forget to mention a while ago is the, uh, in the cost of this, we have the equipment replacement, meaning having to order ambulances or life packs, ventilators, everything else that's needed in the ambulance. That cost is a lot different for the three ambulances versus two ambulances. Uh, it go, will go from having to order a new ambulance once a year to with three ambulances, to having to do it every two years with, uh, the two ambulances. So I just wanted to put that in there, because that does affect the cost of the, the overall cost.
But we currently, I think currently in our fleet, we do have three ambulances and we have one backup, correct?
Correct. Uh, how many backups you have? You got three backups? So we got, I know we got three newer trucks, when I left, had three newer trucks, and we had three backups, but some of the backups were really old. Uh, three hundred plus thousand miles on them?
Yeah. So looking at this and knowing where we are, I want to clarify, the one with two ambulances and a captain or chase vehicle, that would actually be still providing for the availability. All three vehicles still have ALS capability. The, the chase vehicle just does not have transport capability.
Correct, correct, and that's why, uh, in this map, put it in Appalachia.
Yes.
Is, uh, since the hospital is right there, it'll be a better model for that. But yes, it does still have a, uh, not sure if they currently have a ventilator on. But, uh, uh, it should have a life pack ventilator, all the medication and everything else.
To me, just looking at the preliminary numbers we have, and I know this is preliminary, these aren't hard and fast. Knowing that we are trying to move this to a county department, th- this makes the best sense to me. The two, two ambulances and, and the chase vehicle. The fact that it's the ALS capability of that chase vehicle makes a difference, because I, I don't think there's a drop in care, that's, that's just a transport thing. But even at this model, with, if, if our billing collections is around seven hundred a year, and we're putting seven sixty-four right now to the healthcare surtax, this model has, has us putting another four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars out of the healthcare surtax to the ambulance service to, to cover it. So I, I, I think the other ones, we might could work up, back up to those, but I think this is our starting point. That's just my thought.
The issue I got with that one is, is being in situations before as a first responder is, um, time is of, is of the essence with this, and there has been times when doing CPR that we got to get this person up and load it to the hos, take to the hospital. That is the issue I have with this whole chase truck and not transporting, being on scene. I've been in those situations, I was on the streets.
Susan, you responded faster than the chase truck did?
I'm saying the, the transport, the transport issue, we had to stay there until someone got there.
Which could be an hour, thirty minutes, an hour, ten minutes.
Right, especially if you come from East Point, that is a long time, even with two people doing CPR.
That's a long time.
It's a very long time.
Yeah, and, and with this model or any other model, uh, that's going to happen at some point. Right now, uh, if Rescue One here in Appalachia goes to TMH, then there's going to be a wait time, because right now the chase truck is in, if there is one today, it's probably in East Point. So there's going to be a wait. It is always going to happen at some point, and that's not a good situation. And we try to set this up to where it'll mitigate as much as possible, and that's where I brought in the additional options with, uh, medical volunteers that are first aid that can do some driving to try to mitigate those issues as much as possible.
Well, yeah, even if, yeah, but even if it didn't matter where you placed the chase truck in the county, you're still going to create the same scenario in that area. Doesn't matter if it's Appalachia, East Point, or over toward Lanark Village. You're still recreating that same issue, doesn't matter where that chase truck's located then.
Well, the, the problem too there, Mr. Chairman, is we have mutual aid, right? So say we do have issues with one ambulance out of the county, the other one's covering, we got the chase truck, we can always contact Gulf or Wakulla for mutual aid for transport, right?
Yes, the, the only issue with that is if, uh, Gulf or Wakulla's really busy that day, they might not have something to send either, which has happened, but it's usually, you know, when I was here, we was here to help them too, and when we called them, they always came. So...
That was going to be my question. Is there, number one, can we get an agreement that they would do transports for, I mean, transports out of the county for us? You know, with any of the surrounding counties, are they willing? If, if one has three or four ambulances, and one is sitting there, we can get them to transport somebody from Weems to Bay, from Weems to TMH, which keeps our two and our chase truck in the county at all times. In addition, is there a company that, is there any, uh, company that provides that service that we can call and say, hey, we got a transport, can you come to Weems and pick this person up and transport him to Weems, to TMH or to Bay wherever they need to go? Is that a possibility too?
Yes. Yeah, there's several companies out. The only hiccup to that would be the, where they come from. Most of them, I believe, is in Panama City. I don't think there's any in Tallahassee that I'm aware of. Uh, so they would, if they're available, they would have to drive from Panama City.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Calhoun will do the same thing. Calhoun will come down if we need them to with that transport truck that they have.
Yeah, if, if we're going to stick with the two and the chase, as, as you see up there, I would like us to get agreements with all our surrounding counties about, for transports, commissions, transports from, I, I hear what Commissioner Crewman's saying, this is different than that. I'm talking about transport, I, I, I would really, that's what we have, I would hate any of our units to be out of the county on a transport.
Yeah. But I do, I do think it gives us a clear starting point, though.
It does.
And we can build, try to build back up to the other one, maybe we can do it within a year, but you can't start at the top.
Every model has its pros and cons, uh, and either way you look at it.
It does. And, and at the end of the day, even where they're located, it's not always going to, to help every issue.
Yeah.
It, it's just not. I mean, it has nothing to do with EMS services, but I, you don't know how many people I've talked to, because I'm also on the East Point Water and Sewer Board, uh, about fire hydrants. And, but I've had people on East Point tell me, say, Ricky, it really doesn't matter. I said, what you mean? He said, I got a fire hydrant right in front of my house and it still burnt down. You know what I mean? He said, they just, he, he said, the house burned faster than the response got to it. He said, there's nothing you can do about that. They didn't have to look for the hydrant, it's right there in my ditch. You know what I mean? So, it's just, unfortunately, sometimes you're not going to be able to respond fast enough to, to help some residents and some, some families. That's just the nature of it, because we're so widespread. Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Louis?
Just for clarification, uh, Louis, the, the, the two ALSs and the one chase truck, they, all three of those vehicles had the same capabilities outside of transportation.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you, sir, we really appreciate it, sir. Let's take a, about a five-minute break, we'll come back to Mr. Hall.
Page 10, you're going to see the assets of the hospital fund. So the assets are what the hospital fund owns as of September 30. So the left column is September 30, 24, the right column 23. And I like to just kind of highlight the things that are, that are big changes this year. The first number that kind of jumps off the page is the first number on the page. 2.9 million of cash versus 1.7 million of cash at September 30, 23. So healthy amount of cash, and I think that is the largest amount of cash this facility has had in, in quite a few years. So that's, that's a good change for sure. Second number on there is the accounts receivable. In any hospital audit, we have to spend a lot of our time in receivables and revenues, making sure that those numbers are materially accurate and that those will turn into cash. So we're very comfortable with that receivables that we got there, 1.1. Third number on there is due from other funds. That is the amount of money that is due from the county. So there's always a lag in terms of, of when the cash comes over. So 483 due from the county. The rest of the numbers on that page are fairly comparable with the year before. So I'll go ahead and go to page 11. So on page 11, if assets are what the fund, or what the hospital owns, liabilities are what the hospital owes. So looking at what they owe as of September 30, 24, and 23. Couple of big numbers on here to, to highlight. The accounts payable of $1 million. Good thing there is it didn't grow year over year. The hospital, we always take a look and make sure the hospital is paying their vendors, they're not sitting on invoices, stretching vendors, anything like that. So that is not, not happening, so that's good. And within that $1 million is 500 plus thousand that was due to Tallahassee Memorial. And I know you guys know that that balance was paid off shortly after these numbers. So that accounts payable number is really only about 500,000. Due to other funds. So due from other funds was the amount that was due from the county. Due to is how much is due to the county related to that. Grant, so there was some money changing hands between Weems and, and you guys. That's on these numbers. And then unearned revenue there, kind of in the middle of the page, $350,000. The hospital received a grant or appropriation from the state of Florida, where only it was about, give or take half a million dollars. There was a portion of it where they could say that they expended the funds, so they recognized the revenue. The rest of it, they had not expended the funds as of September 30, so we had to put it here on the balance sheet. Those funds will be expended in fiscal '25, and then that amount recognized. So really only two other things on the balance sheet to talk about. If you look at estimated third-party settlements, there's actually two lines that say that. One's in current, one's in non-current. This is a same situation we talked about last year with the lip. There is approximately $300,000, it's 384, I believe, of lip that's known that the hospital owes back. They were notified of that early in calendar year '24, they have not paid it back yet. Mostly because the state's been quiet on it. But that is, that is owed, that's not going to go away. The remainder of that is an estimate of what could be owed from the other years. Honestly, there's not been a lot of movement, or at least movement that's been made public to us. We do understand that ACHA, Florida Medicaid, is speaking to Washington and, and kind of going through avenues to hopefully reduce, minimize that exposure. But as of today, we don't know where that's going to land. So that estimate that was presented to you last year this time is still sitting on the books in the same amounts.
But Brian, so what they actually owe is 300,000?
Yes, I think it's about 384 that's, that's known and not going away.
Be paid back by the hospital?
Right.
Okay.
Let's see, 335, I'm sorry. 335 is known, that's not going away, that is owed. The rest of it is an estimate, and we just don't know yet. So that's kind of the balance sheet. At the bottom, net position is equity, and you have a net position of about $5.6 million versus 6.2 the year before. So page 12 is what, once upon a time, we would have called the income statement. This shows the operations of the hospital. Again, just kind of hitting the high points. The total operating revenues, so the subtotal of the first section, is 10.1 million versus 7.9 the year before. So that's up an incredible 27.5%, which is a substantial increase year over year, that's great. And again, in any hospital setting, we, we do procedures to make sure that that number's really turning into cash, and it, and it does compare favorably to cash. So we do believe that's a good number. So our revenue's up almost 28%. When we look at our expenses, the expenses are up a little shy of 14%. So revenue increase did outpace expenses, which is good. And then we look into what the individual expense line items, what increased. So really, the biggest increase was in salary, wages, and benefits, and it was up 20% year over year. I know you guys and, and gals have already had some discussion about the EMS salary. So that's kind of where that came from, so I know y'all are familiar with, with that situation. So the, the net result of all the above is that you had an operating loss before you start talking about your, your grants and your funding from the county, of 3 million versus 3.6 million the year before. So you narrowed that loss, so it moved in the right direction. When you come in, you add, you add in down at the bottom of the page, your grants, your interest income, the amount that you get from the county. Then you get the total bottom line. At the bottom is a decrease of 658,000 versus a decrease of 117,000. Now, the one thing I will say that, if you look at transfers out, you'll see a negative 500,000. That's that movement coming of the money that was recognized in the hospital, and then we decided that it needed to go back to the county. So that's, that's kind of a weird situation. But, but the end result is relatively comparable to where we were the year before with less grants. And the only other thing I would mention on grants is that, for all intents and purposes, from a funding aspect, COVID is over. So there was a lot of grant money that was flowing through the hospital and really every governmental entity during COVID and for the years afterwards, but that is kind of ended at this point. So the haze in the barn, so to speak. So on the cash flow, page 13. The really easiest way that I like to look at this, just look at the subtotals. So the top section, operating activities, that's running the hospital. So you want that number to be, you know, as positive as you can get or break even. And of course, in your case, it's, it's a negative. So we have a, a negative 1.8 million. So it costs 1.8 million to run the hospital. Now, that is before you add in what the county gives the hospital, the grants, all that other stuff. Just treating patients costs us 1.8 million in '24. Second section, you can, this is where you add in the, the amount that the, the county gives the hospital, so that's a big positive. And then the subtotal of the third section is just paying back the debts, purchasing capital assets, and that kind of thing. So the subtotal of all the above is at the bottom, and you can see where the cash increased from 1.7 million to 2.9 million in fiscal '24, which again is a, is a positive result. So we move into the notes. So I'm going to skip ahead to page 20, if that's okay. Give everybody a second to get there. So page 20, charity care. I always like to highlight this, and I do kind of keep an eye on that. As a hospital, as a public hospital, obviously part of the mission is to, a large part of the mission is to treat patients regardless of their ability to pay. So every year, the hospital captures those charges that are not paid by the patient that fit under the charity care policy, and then estimates the cost. So the cost was $250,000 in '24 and 157,000 in '23. So this is real money. That's a substantial amount for a hospital of this size. So again, I think it's important, just from a community perspective, to understand that this hospital is serving a benefit. There's, there's real costs involved that's not being refunded to the hospital in, in treating the most vulnerable members of our population. Let's see, I'm going to skip ahead here to page 30. One of the, on page 30, I know one of the, there's been a lot of conversation about potentially transitioning to rural emergency hospital status. So with that conversation, I just wanted to highlight, basically, this, this gross revenue breakdown in the middle of page 30 kind of shows you who's walking in our door. As a hospital, we have no control over who walks in the door and what insurance card they have in their pocket, or if they have an insurance card in the pocket. We have to treat everybody the same. So that make, that breakdown is what we call payer mix. Basically, you can see your Medicare is about a quarter of your revenue. And then very little tradition is, really, that Medicaid is traditional Medicaid. Very little traditional Medicaid. About 10% Blue Cross, and then the rest is going to be commercial plans. So the, that is the Blue Cross of the world, as well as your Medicare Advantage and your Medicaid commercial volume. So I say all that to say, when you're looking at your rural emergency hospital, that potential transition, you do want to keep in mind that, that the payment increase is related to Medicare only and obviously outpatient. So the more Medicare volume you have, the more that transition makes sense. The less you have, the more it gets to be a, kind of a cost benefit scenario. But I know you guys have, guys and gals have hired folks to, to advise you on that situation. But I just wanted to show you what your volumes look like for the year. And then on page 31 and 32, won't go into that in detail, but note 11 there describes the situation with DISH and LIP. So the LIP estimate that we were talking about is all in there. A lot of details, if you want to read that, it'll explain kind of how those numbers got there. The other thing I'd mention is the second paragraph of note 11 shows the amount of DISH that you actually got. So the DISH and LIP that you got, that the hospital got in '24 was 1.9 million. In '23 was 1.6 million, so it was up a little bit. I'm talking to all my hospitals' clients about this, and just mentioning that, that the federal funding for that is very uncertain at this point. As we all know, the, the flavor of the day in Washington is cost cutting. So we don't know where the federal funding for Medicaid supplemental funding that makes its way to us. We don't know where that will land. But I did want you to know, at this point, this is kind of what's at stake. We've got about $2 million that's flowing through the facility right now for DISH and LIP. So skipping ahead to page 37 is the internal control report. So similar to last year, your, the last few years, you'll recall, we have to report on. Internal controls in our world, there's, there's really a few types. But the two that you'll see in here is significant deficiency, which is anything that we feel like we need to tell you about, basically. And material weakness is anything that either did change the numbers materially or could have changed the numbers materially. So both of those are pretty, pretty low bars. But we had several findings last year, and a few of these repeated this year. The first finding, which is on page 39, and all of these we deem to be material weaknesses. So first finding, 2024-01, which is a partial repeat of the year before. This is really just outlining the adjustments that we needed to make to the financials. I will note and give credit where it's due. Alliance has brought in Jason Bonner, and actually Jason and I worked, we've known each other a long time. We worked together with other hospitals, he's, he's a fantastic accountant. So he has improved, he and the team at, at Weems working together have improved a lot of this. But he wasn't there during the whole year. So, so there were some things that needed to be cleaned up. I'm pretty optimistic that, that this will be cleaned, and, and we'll see where that goes next year. But I am optimistic about that one. The second one is segregation of duties. And we've talked about this the last few years. Honestly, that's, that one's probably going to be there for, for quite a while. That is simply, in a hospital this size, you have, everybody's wearing a lot of hats. That is not ideal from an internal control situation, because people can do things, not saying they would, but they can do things. They have the ability to do things that you don't want them to have the ability to do. The only way to really get that out is to hire, hire more people, and just from a cost benefit standpoint, it may or may not make sense to do that. So that's one of those findings we have to tell you about, but it's just kind of the nature of running a, a smaller facility. And then the third one is a repeat of the IT finding, and that's what Mr. Walker was talking about with the risk assessment. My understanding, as he said, is that it'll be done this spring. We'll have a chance to take a look at it. The recommendations, there will be recommendations that come out of that. So it's not a just drop a report on your desk and walk away, it's going to say things you've got to do. So we'll be monitoring that and making sure that they're doing the things they need to do. And then we'll report back in the '25 audit. Again, and I've told Mr. Walker this, and he mentioned that that report is sensitive. So I have asked that that report never be discussed in a, in a public format, because it's going to have IT vulnerabilities. So I just remind the commission of, of that from, I know you, you guys have to comply with the laws. But just be aware of the fact that that report will have vulnerabilities there and would be interesting to certain people that we want to keep out of their hands. I know I moved fast, does anybody have any questions about any of this? Or any of the other matters, clinics, ambulances, et cetera, that, that we discussed today?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and, and I appreciate you taking my call yesterday, because they called and asked you about this. Because I was confused in the wording on page 31, note 10, about the employee leasing. The way I read that, I'm like, we're paying someone $5 million to do our, our employee leasing. But could you explain that, please?
Yes, yes, good question. So employees of the hospital in this facility are actually employees of a third, third party. So the third party hires all our employees, passes those costs to the hospital, in what we call an employee leasing situation, which is not uncommon. So those costs, where it says employee leasing costs, that's really the salary and wages of, of, of our employees that are under that arrangement.
And Mr. Chairman, that's, they based that on a percentage, like the employee leasing company gets a percentage of that $5 million and the $4 million respectively to, as a, as a fee to do the payroll.
Yeah, they'll get a small, and honestly, I don't know the exact arrangement, I'd have to look it up. But they'll either get a small percentage, a very small percentage, or they'll get a, a fee. But the numbers that you're seeing there are really payroll. It's not that we're paying another, paying payroll plus another company $5 million.
Thanks for the clarification, that's all I have for right now.
Can I ask a question? Brian, on any, any of these numbers and stuff, the hospital already paid back the money that they had during COVID that they had returned back, didn't they? So they've returned all the money back on the COVID issue?
Sure.
Right?
Okay, good, great question. So in COVID, the hospital received several million dollars of funding from, from cares and other sources, it gets complicated. During COVID, the hospital determined that they got more than they could justify, which is very uncommon. You were the only hospital I had that gave money back. Y'all were honest, I suppose. But they did submit a check back, and then those, all those years, to my knowledge, have been through audits. So we're on the back end of that. So we're not anticipating any more money to come from COVID. We're not anticipating us to pay back any money from COVID. Now, I would mention, and I think, I'm glad you asked that question. The Republicans, and I believe they've already passed the law, that they were extending the statute of limitations for COVID-related monies through '27, as it was going to expire this year. So essentially, what they're telling us is they are not done looking at it. So they could be investigating from now to the next three years.
Okay.
But as of today, we're not expecting any, any money in or out related to COVID for the hospital.
That's what I was talking to the board about a couple of meetings ago. I saw that on TV, and it kind of worried me, because I didn't want our little hospital to have to pay any big substantial money back, you know?
Yep.
But thank you for that information, Brian.
Absolutely, great question.
Anyone else have any questions? I think it was pretty straightforward, thank you, it was, it was very good.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Good to see it moving in at least a positive direction, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yep. All right, now we're up to commissioner comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll start out. I, I'm sure you all received an email from the FDOT folks about things that we would like maybe to see, since they're starting to do, I think May 5, they're going to start the resurfacing project from the Apalachicola Bridge to Franklin Street.
Yes.
The Long Bridge. And they were asking of things, so I'm going to submit a list, because I've got several things in my district that I would like for them to look at in terms of speed limit changes, signage, double lines in certain areas, like around Hidden Beaches area, where there's been a couple unfortunately fatalities, one within the last year. But I just want to let you know, I don't know if y'all got that email as well, but I was just going to let y'all know. I'm going to submit some stuff, and I was going to see if y'all wanted me to submit some stuff in y'all's district as well, and it coming from one commissioner instead of all five of us, you know?
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Now, is that just in relation to the project they're doing, or in relation to the county period?
In relation to the, the project they're doing in the county period. I think they're, I guess, wanting an idea of what they might can change while they're doing the project. Which I thought it would be before, because it's already been kind of engineered and planned. But I'm just going to be asking like this last, last bit of what do you guys need or want, which, now, we can request this, it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to get it. Because I know I've requested things, and they say, nope, nope, nope. But I still have that stack of FDOT stuff about this thick.
That's dope about mine.
I'll, I'll add to, use what we didn't get approved for the last time in all of our districts. And then if y'all have anything else, if y'all want to email Michael, and Michael will get it to me or whatever.
I don't think, as far as District 2, from Carabel into the county lines that both, I don't think we've got any more projects, right? Going on now.
I mean, the fact that they've already, the fact that they've already changed it into Patton Street, and I'm sure they're going to, whenever they do start that part of that project, they should be kind of cleaning it up, making it look better. But that was, that, I mean, they've already done that, so that's, that's a really big deal. You know, to get that straight.
Mr. Chairman, when are they supposed to put the traffic light at Allen Drive?
Well, it's going to be when they start this project, that they're, it's supposed to be starting May 5. I don't know if they're going to do it. From the looks of it, they're going to do, they're going to do a lot of preliminary work on the Apalachicola Bay Bridge, between the two bridges on the fields. They're adding a lot of articulating block to shore it up in that area on the field. They're also doing the traffic light, and then when they get through with all of those elements, and they're going to come back and do the paving. That's what I understand.
Yeah, because I think cut under the road for the utility work, for the wires and stuff, so. I did, so I'm, I'm glad to see it finally coming to fruition. But just so the public's aware, I know people are going to get aggravated with the paving. And last I heard, they were going to do it at night, but I don't know how, they're going to have to do some stuff during the day. But I've gotten a lot of people saying, well, we need it done, we need it done, we need it done. I just want to inform the public that those same people will probably be complaining about getting to school and work those days that the, the construction's going on. So just be patient and understand that we're at the end of the end game, is going to be so much better than what we have right now with the roads the way it is, so.
There's a lot going on during that time.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I got one thing, I, I kind of touched on it with Director Davis, but I did meet with Apalachicola, new city manager. And we had a good talk, and to make sure that we have a good worker relationship amongst each other.
Meeting with them. Courtney and Cece have a meeting with Kim Commissioner on the 29th, next week, Tuesday. Okay? So that, basically, is an effort, which Commissioner Crewman asked for, an effort to kind of make sure we work together with code enforcement, the city and the county, as you know, as one, as best as we possibly can.
Yeah, for real.
Absolutely.
I, I would like to take a moment to publicly thank this board for doing what I'm trying to do, control my emotions during legislative session. So thank you for not being overreactive, or, or so far, we've not had any knee-jerk reactions from Franklin County. And honestly, I think that's our best foot forward, is because they're going to do what they're going to do, and we just have to wait and see where it winds up.
Well, that's why I said, ask them to amend what they amended. You know, that's all funny.
But yeah, no, it's, it's, it's been different, but you know, we'll make it through. We're all serving the same residents.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I mention something?
Yes, sir.
This is concerning the oysters. And as y'all know, I, I got Michael to send y'all the, about the meeting in Pensacola, talking about on the Apalachicola Bay, about the, you know, the harvesting rules and all this. Now, I received something the other day, I think it's first of the week, about Cedar Key. And they're going to be discussing that. So I've made a call inquiring, why is there not something about Apalachicola Bay in Franklin County? So let's see if we receive an answer. And I just wanted you to worry that. Because what I'm saying is, you got a thing in Pensacola, you got to move in Cedar Key. Come down, let's come to Franklin County and have a meeting. Anyway, I inquired, so we're going to find out what the answer would be with.
Always.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say too-
Just a clarification on that. Commissioner Sanders, is that workshops they're having?
Yes.
On the rules and all that specifically, and it says in there specifically Apalachicola Bay.
And we, we just had a workshop last week.
Now, this is another one that's Cedar Key, that's specifically going to talk on Apalachicola Bay. That's odd.
Yeah, but you got a state entity also, FWC is all across the state.
I, I believe, and I may be completely off with this, but I believe it's going to kind of mirror both, both of our, you know, by being state, or is it FWC control, whatever, whatever they come up with here is kind of going to coincide elsewhere with the commercial harvest. But did you have something, Commissioner Ward, because I was going to just give them a workshop update. I believe you, you were there. Okay, on, on that workshop, FWC did a great job, it was a good presentation. We had a little clickers, we voted on everything. That information will be out, and I'm going to ask that Dan Ellington to get that information to the county commissioners as well, because it had a lot of questions, a lot of answers. Gives you kind of an idea of what, how you could read the room, on how people felt about everything from bag limits to, you know, a limited style entry. Now, I will say this, I don't, I was trying to get a point across in the Q and A with that, or really, it was the comment section, and I, I believe there's some folks in the room that may have took it the wrong way. I just did some quick math on what they were, in that model, were going to allow to be harvestable bottom. And, and I don't have it, I actually left that little note in my office. But basically, what it comes down to is what they were giving us for '26 opening, and, and, and that's fluid, so some of that will change, but it won't be a drastic change in the amount of actual harvestable oysters out there. With just a 10, 10 fisherman participation in it, you're only looking at, if, if each fisherman caught the same amount of oysters, would, would equate to about $24,000 a year. And, and I know there's been a lot of conversation about opening it up completely. And the point I was trying to make when I made that comment is that, just off of 10 fishermen, you're talking $24,000 a year. And, and I made the comment, that's hard for somebody to live off of. Obviously, that would be a supplemental type of thing. But if it opened up to say, and I even scaled it all the way down to 40 people fishing, you're only looking at about $5,000 a year. So that's just, you know, it's what I've been trying to say the whole time. There hasn't been a, a large-scale restoration done. It's really small areas. And, and going back to beating this dead horse, but the FWC and their budget line had requested the 30 million, or it's 20 million, coming out of general revenue, and then a $10 million spending request from the NIFWIF money, which would have gave them a total of 34 restoration material. Well, the Senate, last account still, and they're still, you know, having the committees, so we're sending emails and everything. You know, we're still looking at, it's going to land between zero from the House and five with the Senate. So they're in a negotiation there. But worst-case scenario, you know, they'll get the $10 million spending request, and, and whatever we get between the House and the Senate, you know, you can do the math, if we get the $5 million, the Senate's asking, that's 15, so it's going to be half the initial request. But the, the, the fact is, is after the meeting, I talked with some oystersmen, and, and everybody knows that without material in the water, this is a mute conversation. You know, because it's not going, the bay's not, in five years, is not going to reproduce what it took thousands of years for nature to do. It needs help, and it needs help, and the guys of material need stuff in the water, or, you know, I hate to say it, but we're, we're not going anywhere.
Well, they, another thing to add to what you're talking about. So I hear what you're saying with it, probably not going to be enough to actually be income-supported for somebody just doing, but as I understand it, now that they've been very limited in what they're actually telling, they're taking a lot of input, FWC, the day I'm talking about. They're taking a lot of input, but they haven't really, like, stated back how they feel about stuff. But I know that some of the discussion about limited entry has centered around, it's going to be, it needs to be these people that were the last ones that were working and had their license, and actually have the trip tickets and all that stuff. But that's actually reverse of what you're talking about. Because what you're talking about is it's only enough to be a supplemental- Because what you're talking about is it's only enough to be a supplemental income.
Well, it is in twenty-six.
You know what I'm saying? It's only enough to be a supplemental income, how are you gonna only choose people that you think that's gonna be the only income?
And that's what these, that's what these questions, and that's why I want to get y'all that. Because, you know, I want to say it was about forty, was it forty-fifty participants at the workshop? Yeah, and, you know, you know, there was a question, I mean, there was some communication and questions on that that was like, well, would you, you know, FWC was wanting to fall back on a restricted species endorsement, which, again, I've told them, there's no way you can do that because, number one, to get a restricted species endorsement, you got to show where you made five thousand dollars off the previous year, base being closed for five years.
They're gonna have to waive that.
Yeah, well, that's why I've been trying to, you know, bring it out in light, or either grandfather them in. And then have them maintain it from that point forward. But in all this saying, you know, this is based off the premise that this is gonna be a growing thing. Without that funding, obviously, it's not gonna grow, not at a very rapid pace, because ten million dollars is not gonna get you very far.
Well, you know, that's what was the concerns when they started with the project, is money gonna be revolving every year? If it's not, you know, they're in trouble, and so they're finding out that they got a, what, twenty million dollar surplus, I mean, a shortfall? So it's gonna really affect what they do.
That's the thing that gets me, and that's what I've been telling everyone, you know, not, I think we all know that now, but in our letter to committee members and stuff like that, you know, we've spent five years, we've got a five-year closure, we've spent roughly a little over five million, I believe, four million, I can't, I don't have the exact numbers, to get the data, the scientific data, to justify requesting the funding. Now, we've got all that in play, now it's time to put the material out, deploy the material, and now they don't want funding. You know, and really, I feel like we're collateral damage of what's going on and inviting up in Tallahassee. But really, it's, I'm gonna echo what I said last time, you could just take that, the million spent already of taxpayers' dollars and just flush it down the toilet, because we spent that money to get us to the point that, hey, this is a viable ecosystem, it'll work, we need, you know? And now, we're not getting funded. It's disgusting, I don't want to get any further into that.
Maybe it'll work out, thank you. Anyone else, Commissioner comments?
One more than that, sorry, to kill the drill. There's been an outpour of people trying to call, now, we were calling all the way up. I myself called Senator Simon's office, he was in committee at the time, was gonna get back with me. Then we all know what happened on the news, we know with the shooter. And this all kind of, this all happened the same day, so I give, I'm not, you know, throwing any punches about not getting a return call, it was chaotic. But where we're at with that is Representative Shove put forth some language that basically put a ten-mile buffer around any further drilling. And the Senate was looking at their language, and it was still just from the old language of, I think, a mile. And we were trying to, you know, persuade Senator Simon to get a push in the Senate to just adopt the language that the House had approved because it expanded the buffer. I know that there's been many calls, I actually had an email requesting I call today, but I'm with y'all. But I'm just saying, that's where we're at with the drilling efforts and everything, or kill the drill, so I just let everybody know, that's what I know. And I'm not sure if y'all have been updated on any of that, but.
No, I know that the House legislation covers three estuaries left in Florida and Apalachicola, our system is one of them. So there's three of them, and that language that's put forward would give protections to those three areas.
And again, the House just expands a little more, and the Senate, there's nothing wrong with the Senate language outside the fact of the radius. Yeah, if they can just adopt that language, then it would be a need, yeah.
Yeah, that would work out. All right, anyone else, Commissioner comments?
As you saw in our informational packet, we're going out for the last phase of Highway sixty-seven, so hopefully we can get it. I hope, and I'm just putting on the table where y'all will know, there's already some cracking around the edges of the new road that was put in right about twenty-twenty-two, so there's already cracking, I mean, big old chunks of asphalt on the shoulders right outside of Caravelle. It wasn't picking up, I don't believe, but anyway.
Not with them big old trucks.
Just gonna make you aware that we're starting out for the fourth and final phase of that Highway sixty-seven.
It's been a long time.
It is. Anyone else?